I hadn't called the meeting to order since it's seven o'clock. The meeting will uphold as much as possible that we do in-person meetings and chambers. However, note that all votes will be held by roll call. And I ask you to raise your hand up in the air so that I can see it on the screen. Or Susan is going to use the chat feature to raise her hand so that I can call on you. And we're not talking over each other during the meeting. For those in the public that have joined us, we will have two public hearings. And I believe staff has, or they will be reaching out to you in the chat feature to figure out which public hearing of interest it was that you wanted to speak on. And we'll provide more prior to that, when that agenda item comes up, as to how you'll jump on and be able to voice your opinion. Karen, can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Young?
Here.
Commissioner Keen? Commissioner Brink?
Here.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Commissioner Batty?
Here.
Chair Langness?
Present. We have a quorum. Next is the pledge of allegiance. And we ask those that are able to join us in our nation's pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice. Next, we have approving the agenda. And I will note that staff did request that we add an item on the agenda between nine and 10 regarding the rooster noy-- I'm sorry, rooster nuisance memo for discussion. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? We have a motion by Commissioner Batty and a second by Commissioner Miller. Is there any discussion? Seeing, seeing none? Karen, can you take a roll call vote?
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Commissioner Keen? Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Brink?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Batty?
Aye.
Chair Langness?
Aye. Agenda is approved. Item number five, approve planning commission meeting minutes from April 8, 2020. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion approve.
Commissioner Miller moves to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Batty, seconds. Is there any discussion or corrections necessary for the meeting minutes of April 8, 2020? Seeing none. Karen, can you take a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Commissioner Brink?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Batty?
Aye.
Commissioner, Chair Langness?
Aye. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is a variance application for the address 21551 Inwood Avenue for a front yard setback. This does include a public hearing to consider the variance application. The process for this will be that Donovan will prevent or present the staff report. And then we will give the applicant, if they are available online, an opportunity to talk. After each of those points, commissioners will be able to answer questions. And then we'll open up the public hearing. Just prior to opening up the public hearing, Dan Undem, one of our staff, will give instructions on how we will call those members of the public up before we bring it back to the commission. Kind of anyone to kick it off?
Certainly.
Thank you.
I would like to present the, first of all, I'd like to thank the applicants for their patience. They had applied for this back in February with a complete application in early March. And they've been waiting until we figured out how to do these public hearings online. So I want to note that and also ask their patients as we move forward with this, as the technology is still evolving. But with that said, I'd like to present the variance application for 21551 Inwood Avenue. This is to construct a garage four feet from the property line. It is narrowest distance. The property here is on Third Lake. It's a single-family zoning with the shoreline overlay. And what's unique about this property are two things. And I'll spend a little time here on this, this aerial map to show you. This is the subject property here. There is actually an upper house and a lower house with a steep slope in between, leaning down to the lake. For this property, there was a, well, I believe the, probably the platium of the road area became first. And the road was constructed second, 216th Street here, turning to Inwood Avenue at this, at this juncture. But you can see from the solid lines that the road doesn't follow the platted right of way. And so that essentially, that leaves a lot of obstructions within the official right of way. And some point, I expect this to be cleaned up. But when, when looking at this application, we have to take the facts as they stand currently to show how this is currently the, the, the front property line for the, for the applicant's property. And that it would be likely, if this was ever changed, that, you know, this, this solid line, the property line would go southward and be, you know, closer in alignment to the curb, which you see here, there's this white line here. So that's something of a unique facet of this. But you can see also from the aerial how the many of these, many of these other garages along here are situated basically on the property line. Now, moving to the, to the, the application. The, the property is located here. What, what, what's being proposed is a, let me get to the existing here a little more. As you can see here from the submitted existing condition survey, here's the lower house and the upper house. The, and the, the current driveway area. This doesn't show, but there's actually a shed located here along this western property line. There's a non-conforming shed by its close nearness to the property line here that's existing. These two properties, two structures are non-conforming by both their, not meaning the minimum dwelling size as well as being too close to that eastern property line, as well as there only being one dwelling allowed on a single, on a single lot. The, what is proposed is a large addition to the lower house. So you can see with, with this attached garage. So you can see, here's the, the lower house still existing. Non-conformity rules allow it to remain, you know, in, you know, this close, that's closest point 5.3, 5.2 feet from the property line. But there's no expansion there. However, the expansion of the house addition is, is meets the side setbacks. It's where the garage is currently proposed. It's at four feet from that southwestern corner from the existing property line. And as you can see, that's about some, I would say about, I think I measured 20 some feet to the curb line currently. So the, the four-foot variance request does sound extreme. But given the context, you can expect that, you know, the actual use right of way, there's, there's still quite a different distance. And the, also with this, they, they proposed to remove this section of the driveway, but keep the other part portion of the driveway there. And then, of course, provide the opening, provide the driveway access to the proposed garage. The, this proposed construction still is within the, the maximum impervious surface percentage. And so they're only, they only asked for one, one variance there. For that front structure setback. The, there are, there are trees on the site that are proposed to be removed. And that tree preservation rules require replacement of those trees that aren't exhibiting signs of disease or death. Because of the steep slope on the property shown here with these contour lines, the, you know, how close they are. And the C engineer estimated, you know, up to 40% slope, a little over 40% slope at some places there. You know, drainage on the property is a concern as well as just the stability of that, of that hillside. And so the, actually, it's, there's a, I see a 62% listed as part of that slope. So the engineers' comments do, you know, do seek to address that. You know, ensuring that any sort of construction doesn't result in erosion or destabilization of the slope. And also he, the C engineer makes a note about the tree removal. I did receive a, a, one, one comment from a neighbor for, for this. And it was from Natalie Fitzpatrick, who I believe works at Brockt, which is the, you know, the, the aggregate, you know, gravel, former gravel pit adjacent to this property. And she expresses concerns, and this, this was a noted in your, was included in your PC packet, staff packet. And there's a concern related to the snow removal. Also, you know, that concern that perhaps the property lines are correct. And, and then also the, just some, some confusion around the Doug McNerland listed as an applicant, but he is applicant with Maria Kaiser, the owner. And some concerns about the process. And so I wrote her back and discussed that, you know, the strip of survey is considered to be accurate and prescriptive easement actually has the road over, much over some of the Brockt property. And that snow storage is something we encourage, snow storage to be on, you know, on the, on the person's property where it's been removed. But the city code does not address that. I have an issue, but we always encourage people to deal with their, their snow responsibly and not push it across the road. And with that, I like, happy to take any questions from the planning commission. So, Chair Langness, can you see the screen?
Yes, I'm sorry. I had my mute thing on. I kept saying Commissioner Miller, Commissioner Miller, sorry. I'll get you, Batty, in a second.
I'm pretty good at reading lips, but I wasn't sure. Donovan, my question is on your front setback, the 30-foot. Is that from the curb or from the center of the street?
That appears to be from the center of the street.
And is it supposed to be from the curve or the curb?
Um, no, you know, there's always, the, the city asphalt is always narrower than the right of way. So there's room for snow storage. Sometimes there's utility easements in there or utilities placed in there. You know, commonly, it, for almost every block is different in the older parts of the city. But commonly, you know, it appears about, you know, anywhere from five to 12 feet distance between the curb and the edge of the public right of way.
Thank you.
Commissioner Batty?
So this is actually a garage with a house attached, right?
Says the architect, yes.
So, I mean, it's fine. I, um, I mean, there's no, I don't have any problem with the setback. And I, I'm not sure how these, you know, if there's some kind of a procedure here. Obviously, that, obviously, that road is not that old through there. And it'd be an interesting story to find out how it got placed so far off the, the right of way. But that's not our problem here tonight, or it's not our issue here tonight. I, you know, and looking at that, I, there's no other, I mean, I'm assuming because they're not asking for a variance, that site coverage, you know, all, you know, you stated that all the other setbacks are okay, but things like percentage of site coverage. I'm assuming because that existing house is a certain distance from the, the lake that we're, we're okay with that. But I was just curious on the site cover, if the site coverage thing met the current zoning regs.
Yeah, certainly. It's listed on the, the survey as 29.8%. So they're right underneath that 30% maximum.
Okay.
As a proposed condition.
Commissioner Young?
Yeah, um, I have an issue. I don't think it's going to be the 29-point whatever. Because they're looking at the drawings, it would appear that they are not going to have their driveway extend across the full front of the garage. And my, my guess is that most folks like to have their driveway extend across the full front of the garage and not leave an area that is not gravelled or otherwise impervious right in front of their garage door. So I, I have some concerns about whether or not they'll make their 30%. The second thing is, and you've heard me ask this one before, there is no place to put snow on, on, on either side of that garage. It's, it's going to be very, very challenging not to put snow either on their west neighbor or their east neighbor or their across the road neighbor. And so I do have that concern. I'm, I'm not sure if it wouldn't be, if they wouldn't be better off either making the, the garage a little less long and the proposed house that is the addition to the garage to be a little less long to both help them with their impervious surface and with their issue on the variance.
Commissioner Young, if I could address a couple of your concerns there. On that western side where you don't, where there's not the strong gray color of the existing driveway, within the proposed condition survey, there's a hatched area that, that is, in the legend says it's proposed by Tuminus. So they do propose a driveway, the full width of the garage opening, or at least the garage structure, I should say. Also, and this is more difficult, I mean, if you could look at, assuming that you're, you have documents before you, for your, you know, visual cues. On that east side, there is a whole section that's also probably close to 20 feet wide that is existing driveway to be removed. So that would be available for snow storage. And of course, not have to, no, no snow be needing to be removed from the area as well. And I see, you know, a full, you know, 10 feet of width that's within the right of way. But on the west side, there does seem like there's, there's room. And this is kind of something of a, probably about a 20, I think a 23-feet length of driveway. And so it's,
That kind of looks like where they've been storing their boat trailer and their dock during the winter. Looking on the aerial, there was the boat trailer. And looking at the photographs, it appeared that the dock was sitting there. Or is that dock on the lakeside?
I believe the dock, well, I'm looking, you know, there's docks on the lakeside.
But you're confident that they can get to the 30% impervious? A maximum of 30% impervious, correct?
Yes, I, I, I take, when a, you know, surveyor assigns their certificate of, certificate of survey, I mean, I take that is, is they're putting their license on the line and that those, those calculations are correct.
Commissioner Batty, I think I saw your hand go up next.
I am, yeah. I, I was kind of wondering what Susan was looking at there, because it looks to me like there, I mean, they're talking about a certain portion of driveway to, I'm looking at the sheet that's titled, it says draft. You know, it's, it's the one that shows the new house on it. But it's really unclear there what they're actually, there's a note on there where it says existing driveway to be removed. And, and it's the area inside their property line to the, to the east, you know, but they're not, they don't, why didn't they show a line there where they were going to end the? I'm assuming that they're going to take out asphalt all the way to the street, aren't they?
Doesn't show that.
I would not assume that. Yeah, no, it's not shown. And there's no requirement that they remove that. And that's actually not part of their impervious surface calculation at this time.
This, I, you know, again, I'm, I'm with Susan here. I look at this, looked at a few drawings on through the years and I am just, it just looks, it looks large compared to the size.
And Donovan, what, and I'm sorry to interrupt, but I'm sort of continuing on. The, the proposed house, the proposed garage are more impervious surface than the existing house that doesn't have a garage. And so I'm wondering how they get a decrease. And I, I'll leave it to someone who's wiser than I am.
Well, there's, I mean, look, I liked, I liked also, they submitted photos. I like to, you know, show those to, and they also show, you know, the area, the neighborhood and, and winter condition. And so we can see, now, this is actually, you know, looking eastwards. You can see, sorry, Susan, you can see, you know, snow piled up. You know, Nick, the property to the east, where the snow is as tall as a, looks like a four-foot picket fence, a much wider area, and there is room there to remove the snow. Now, if we look westward and the subject property here, there's a, it looks like a kind of station wagon truck or truck parked in the, in the parking lot. You can see my, see my cursor moving there. That's a subject property. And you can see snow beyond that also piled up. And so this is, looks like, you know, pretty much it'd be like mid-winter condition. So, you know, there's, it does reduce some of the mystery or uncertainty around, I think, some of the snow storage. And looking at the, you're going back to, and this is, you know, other, other, other drawing. Here's from the lakeside, the existing, you know, lower house to, to remain. Again, another photo of the lower house with the upper house in view. And there's the, just the existing upper house. And then the existing survey shows, you know, a, you know, some portion, you know, of the, of the existing driveway already out there. And here's the, here's the house footprint. There's the other house footprint, a shed. Sorry?
What is the house footprint? What are you pointing to?
Okay, that, that lower one there, it's kind of the shaded area. And these houses, they're around 607 square, 600, 700 square feet.
But what is the outline that looks like another footprint of a house on this drawing? What, what are those? Is that some kind of a setback line there? Or what is that kind of fat boomerang shaped piece of lines there? That line and just, yeah, that was, what is that?
That's a little bit, it's kind of, I know it's kind of muddying the image, but it's, it's the footprint of the, of a proposed structure. But it's not what they are proposing. So,
So that's something, it's just something different.
Correct. You know, if, I mean, we can,
That was really confusing.
Yeah, yeah. It's, you know, but the, the structure itself is, it's not going to work. You know, the structure itself is something, you know, right here.
Yeah, I, yeah, I can see the existing house there.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, if you could, yeah, I know. But my point is that there is, there is a, there's about, I think they estimate state is about 23.1% current impervious. So there is a decent amount in there, proposing increase of 29.8.
Commissioner Miller, I saw your hand up as well.
Donovan, if you could put that last survey back up. I think you alluded to this, but I wanted to just make sure that I was correcting what I heard. The impervious that we're talking about is only within these black survey lines. And they're not taking into account what's actually there, which goes out to the actual street.
Correct.
And so if they re-change the, the, the streets and put the, put the lines properly where they're supposed to be, you're going to be way over the impervious.
That would, that would be the case unless they put in previous papers, you know, made some accommodation.
And so that, what is it, approximately 20 feet from the black line to the curb line that we're talking about, times the width of that lot?
Approximately, you know, it would only, I mean, there still would be some distance between the curb and the adjusted lot line. And this, of course, this is, you know, also, this is, also this is subject to, there is a utility, you know, wire that runs through here as well, which could impact where that line goes, but um, the, you know, where the, the public right of way would be, but yeah, I mean, I estimate it could be, it could move forward about 10 feet, you know, southward.
So that's going to put them over quite a bit then?
Well, that would be a matter where they would then have to perhaps remove more, you know, move a court, court, you know, equal amount from that, you know, wide area. You know, that doesn't, is not a part of the garage approach. You know, but that would be, that's really speculative at this point.
So, so it's not going to get changed probably in the near future, so we're going to go ahead and potentially approve this variance, but yet then in the future, let's say two, three, four years down the road, they're going to come in and move those boundaries. They're going to pull that survey line out to the curb where it should be, and they're going to be over there impervious by a lot, and we're going to call them up and tell them they have to remove their driveway?
It, it would, it would, I mean, that is a very uncertain timing on when that might happen and, you know, that would be me or my successor having those conversations that they, they need to make some choices. You know, I don't think that's something we, we can plan for at the moment. I mean, I understand the concern. But it's, you know, to actually move that line accord, according to what, you know, current city practice, it's all resident driven and paid for. And actually have consensus for every one of those neighbors to agree to that. That, that takes a lot. And that's why it hasn't been done and I believe the situation's been like this for probably decades. I mean, maybe Doug McNerlin, the applicant can provide some narrative on that one, but you know, I, I bring that up because it, you know, it potentially could be a future change, which would make the, the apparent, I mean, basically makes the, would make the variance something different as far as distance from the right of way. But definitely not, not conforming in the future.
So, yeah, that's my question. And I, and I'm not trying to make, be a real stickler on this, but who owns, I mean, who, honestly, they're using property right now, basically that they don't own, is that kind of what's happening?
Certainly, I mean, and that's, I mean, that, that's part of, it's in the right of way, it's used for vehicle storage, like any kind of parking on a city street would be. You know, and everyone who has a driveway that meets a road, you know, it's a similar situation. Just a little more exaggerated in this case.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Commissioner Young, I saw your hand raised.
Donovan, did you say that there are two non-conforming sheds on the property and will both of them be removed?
Yes.
I don't see other hands. I have a couple of questions to Donovan. While you have the map up here, can you zoom into the existing driveway to be removed? Is it only the portion that is actually on their property and not in the right of way that they're proposing to remove, or is that other line coming off the end of the driveway towards the street, the new driveway? I, I'm having a hard time understanding what the new driveway will eventually look like.
Sure. What, you can see a dash line here at the, along the, is an extension of the eastern proposed garage wall. And so what, what they've shown here is a removal of all this driveway not leading directly to the garage within their property boundary.
So the portion in the right of way would stay?
That's what they're, that's what they're proposing, yes.
Would it? If we were to refresh my memory on our driveway ordinance, if I recall correctly, you have to stay within five feet of the neighboring property. And I believe there's a maximum width. Are they exceeding either of those in this proposed driveway modification?
No, they're not seeing those because it's a, it's a 30 foot maximum width at the, at the, at the curb. At what, basically at the public right of way. And what, what we have here is proposed is 22 feet wide. It's a five foot setback from the side property lines, which here it's 10. And over here, it's something in the range of, say, about 16, 17, I guess. You know, the way the zoning code's written, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't, you know, it's silent on, you know, where, how the, how any kind of driveway or paved area is treated within the public right of way. So that's why it's not added to the impervious surface. You know, when, when we wrote the driveway ordinance, right of way ordinance a couple of years ago, we allowed really only two encroachments within the public right of way. Driveway, well, three driveways, culverts and mailboxes. And this is a driveway within the, the public right of way.
Thank you. Were there other questions of staff? Commissioner Batty?
You know, this really though, steps outside of the, certainly the intent. You know, the, the idea of this driveway width was that that would extend basically to the street, except where it's flared out. You know, where you'd have an apron at the street a little bit. I, I don't think it was ever the intent to allow the kind of thing that they're going to end up with here. It's, it's, that's way more than 30 feet wide. But it's, you know, i- i- it's all paved along, it's almost all completely paved along there anyway, so it, it's not anything that I'm going to raise a stink about, but it certainly doesn't, this certainly doesn't meet the intent of the, of the ordinance. As it relates to driveway width.
Were there other questions of staff? Otherwise, we'll bring the applicant in. Commissioner Young, I see your hand raised.
Yeah. Just one thing for the consideration of the planning commission. We're allowed and encouraged to allow variances under the ABCDNE. I just wanted to bring to attention the rest of the planning commissioners number C, that the plight of the landowner is due to circumstances unique to the property, not created by the landowner. And in this situation, the landowner has complete and total control of the size of the house that they're building and the size of the garage that they're building. And could easily get away from the variance request and deal with the potential for exceeding impervious surface. If they changed the size of their build.
All right, I didn't hear a question in there. Are there any other questions of staff? All right, Dan Undem, could you please bring on the applicant to see if they have anything to add or any type of presentation for us? And then we'll open it up for commissioners to questions to them as well.
Well, and just one second, as long as I have the opportunity, if you are in the, as an attendee right now, if you look at the middle of your screen, you should have the option to raise your hand. When it comes time for the public forum, I ask if you're, when your item comes up that you wish to make public comment on it, is to raise your hand. I will then promote you in as a panelist, you'll be able to give your public comment. Once you're done with the comment, I will move you back into the attendee. So that'll be the process. Just make sure you find that raise your hand features in the middle of your screen as you scroll down. Right now, I will promote Doug in the applicant as to a panelist.
Hey Doug, welcome. Go ahead, anytime. It appears you're muted. You may have to, in the lower left corner of your screen, click the unmute.
Okay, how about now?
We can hear you. Go ahead.
Right, so, there we are. Thanks for your time on this, it's kind of been interesting. Couple of, couple of points based on your, on your questions. The snow, the snow really isn't an issue. We've, we've, we've been shoveling this for well, the, the 10 years that I've been involved with it. My, I'm along with my wife Maria, who's the homeowner, that's why my name is on the information as well. We shovel it to the sides, it's, there's, there's, there's plenty of room and there isn't, there isn't a problem with the snow storage. The trailer that you see on the one picture is from an old boat we had and it was only there during the summer. We stored it at Country View Marine in the wintertime. Now we have a pontoon that we store there as well. So that's out of the picture. The dock is on the lakeside, we just pull it out of the water. And then the driveway issue. The reason that, that it's, it's only removed in that section where it shows it's removed is because that was part of our calculations when we're trying to get down to be under the 30%. That driveway was existing and we had just had it refurbished and redone within the last four years. So that's why it's there, it was there already and we, we just had it redone because it was, it was just in rough shape. We didn't see any reason to remove it because we weren't concerned about it. And again, it didn't, it didn't affect the previous versus impervious and seemed to meet all the requirements. That's the only reason that driveway was there, we're not that concerned about that part of the driveway. The, the driveway we need is just going to be the two spots that are in front of the garage. I mean, we planned on leaving it there just because there was no reason to remove it. Other than that, I think somebody asked about how long the road situation has been there. I, I, I'm sure it's been 30 to 35 years. Based on comments with my wife, who has lived up there for a long time and the neighbors as well. So the, the road situation just has been there a long time and when everybody has done or redone the work, they've, you can see when you look at the pictures, the garages are all out to where they are at and our garage is basically going to be equal to the same distance as everybody else's garage and it'll just basically be online with it. And then I know the house does look big, but it's, it's, it's not that big. It's a two car attached garage and then then there's a third stall kind of behind that that's in the house, but then I think it's only like 921 finished on the main level. And then the second level would be over the garage, so that's closer to 1100. It's a, it's a three bedroom house with a main level that just has the entryway, the foyer, a living room, the kitchen and the dining room. And again, all of these plans were done as we went through the process of finding the variances during the surveys. We've had, I think, six or seven different copies of the survey just so that we could try and get something that we would like that would fit in and meet the requirements. With the only difference being the, where the garage is. And that's why we're asking for the variance because we'd like it just to align with the rest of the neighborhood and just kind of stay in conformity with that.
All right, thank you. Were there questions of the applicant from commissioners? I am not seeing any.
I have no questions. I stopped by earlier this week and, and talked to the owners and got all my questions asked.
Thank you. Were there any other questions of the applicants? Seeing none. All right, hang, hang, hang on Doug, we, we might have something pop up later on when, when we get back into the discussion, but we're going to move into the public hearing portion. Dan, did you want to outline how this process is going to go or kind of go over the list of those in order that we can call up?
At this point, I don't have anybody who's responded via chat that they're speaking to this particular item. If anybody who is in as an attendee right now wishes to speak to this, I just ask that you raise your hand and I'll get you moved in so we can make your comments.
I'll give it about 30 seconds here. If I don't see anything, we will just open and close the public hearing and go back to commissioner discussion on, in a potential motion. You're not seeing any either, correct Dan?
I am not.
All right, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Commissioners, is there a motion or further discussion on this agenda item? Commissioner Miller? Commissioner Miller, you're on mute.
I'm following your footsteps Eric.
That's okay.
I would just like to thank Doug and Maria for their work and their effort in bringing this forward. I think it'll be a nice improvement to their home. And just want to thank them.
Yeah, thank you, Kevin.
Commissioner Young?
Donovan, is there a reason that removal of the two non-conforming sheds is not part of the conditions?
Not part of the what? I'm sorry, was the last thing?
The conditions?
Because it appears that there wouldn't be any room. It's just to me, me that, that, it stated that they will within the, the proposed impervious calculations. It does say, I'm sorry. It does existing second house. I'm mistaken, no, the existing second shed is saying, is, is proposed to be included. But the one up by the road that was seen in the photos, it appears there wouldn't be room for that one and it's not shown in the proposed.
But both sheds are non-conforming, correct?
That is correct.
So do we typically try and get a property as close to conforming as possible? When we're doing variances?
We do if it's, if it's, if it's related to the, related to the application.
Is there other commissioners that had discussion or a motion?
Chair Lang, I want to just mention one thing if I could. I didn't, I didn't state my, my recommendation. Which is, staff recommends planning commission approval of the variance request to locate an attached garage four feet from the front lot line, the property located 21551 Inwood Avenue with the following conditions. No construction demolition shall occur prior to the issuance of this required city permitting. The lower cabin and new construction must be joined by a single, to be a, joined to be a single structure with an enclosed conditioned passageway. All concerns of the C engineer must be met prior to the initiation of construction activities. All required comfort lake, forest lake, wire should district permits must be obtained. And no erosion or drainage issue shall result from the construction of the home.
I believe that was in the staff report.
Yes.
Were there, Commissioner Keen?
Yes, when I spoke with the homeowner the other day, the shed that's on the upper level, that was going to be moved out to the, towards the street just for storage while they're doing the remodeling and then it was going to be removed. Is that correct, Doug?
Yes, that's correct. We have, we're going to just move it over so it's out of the way of construction, but then it's going to house the well and whatever else we need while the, while the house is being done because the lower cabin runs off the same well.
And electricity.
Yeah, and then we're going to get rid of it after, at that point, once, once the house is complete. And/or once we can get the, get all the services within the new structure. And then the, the lower shed is a, it's basically a small rubber made, put together shed that we got from Menards that's just sitting on a wood platform that we built. And if we have to get rid of it, we will, otherwise we think the only issue with it was it was too close to the property line and we could just move it, it just, it's easily picked up and moved.
Was there other discussion or does any commissioner have a motion? Commissioner Miller?
I would, I would make a motion to approve the, the variance request for 21551 Inwood Avenue North with the five staff recommendations. with the five staff recommendations.
There's been a motion. Is there a second? Commissioner Keen, was that you indicating a second?
I'll second. I was on mute.
That, that's fine. That there's been a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Uh, the one comment I have, um, is I, I guess I would prefer that the, the driveway, um, have greater conformity intent, um, within the right of way to meet the impervious surface. And I think if we're giving a variance here to move into the right of way, um, or, or closer to the right of way for the structure, um, the intent would be that, that piece kind of be counted in there. Um, and so I, I, I'm not gonna, you know, not support this because of that, but I, I guess I would prefer that that be part of the, the conditions. Is there any other discussion on this item? Not seeing any. We'll move to a vote. Karen, can you have a roll call?
Commissioner Young?
No.
Commissioner Keen?
Yes.
Commissioner Brink?
Hi.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Batty?
Yes.
Chair Langness?
Hi. Motion carries. Um, Mc, McNerlins, I, I wish you the best of luck on your home. Um, the, the, the pieces that I think Susan and I mentioned of concern, it probably doesn't mean you can't, uh, take those into consideration as you move forward as well. Um, but I wish you the best of luck in, uh, in building your, your new lake dream home.
Thank you very much. We certainly appreciate it.
Dan, can you pull them off of being on, online here with us? As we move to the next item. The next item on the agenda is a grading permit application for four, four, seven, oh Everton Avenue. Um, this does include a public hearing, um, as grading permit applications do. The first step will be that we will go through the staff report. Um, Donovan will present that. We will then have commissioner questions. Um, we will bring the applicant on if they are available. Um, and questions from commissioners to them. And then we will open up the public hearing for anyone that wishes to speak. We will again, um, go through the process of, of that and the order at that time. So Donovan, do you want to kick us off? Donovan, you're on mute.
Thank you. I would like, uh, uh, chair and members of the plan commission, I'd like to present the, uh, grading permit application review for, uh, the Minnesota Lakes self-storage project. This, I like to clarify that this is simply the grading permit application. And what we have before you is simply, uh, no site improvements, no utilities installed. But the ability to, you know, shape the land to, uh, to prepare it for future development, uh, which includes tree removal and and of course proper, you know, sediment erosion control installed. The property itself is located on the, the west side of, of I thirty-five. It's currently vacant. It's about fifteen acres. Uh, much of the property is wetlands. Um, you know, the quick look at the, you know, wetland inventory shows uh, this portion here, you know, much of the property in the, in yellow. And this is, you know, located just south of the Gateway Green subdivision, north of the Min dot yard. Here's the, the interstate rest area. And so what the owner and developer Dick Biagini is, has to work with is an area that's a little bit sloped wooded. Um, and just, it's the high ground here. Um, I also mentioned that Jerry Anderson, the architect is representing the, uh, the project tonight. Um, and so they seek to come off Everton to conduct their grain activities and the, uh, the gr, green plant itself is, shows, you know, the creation of stormwater ponds to, um, to treat stormwater before it enters the stormwater, the wetland area. Um, here shown are, um, a number of self-storage units. This is not the subject of our discussions evening. But this is here to show you, um, what, you know, the, uh, outlines of storm pond and um, elevations which, which they'll be grading to. This grade permit, um, is similar to one we had Piper's, uh, Piper's preserve um, application, um, on intersection, near the intersection of Imperial and highway ninety-seven. So it's the similar process. Um, which according to the zoning code follows the conditional use permit process so that um, we do have, you know, a public hearing for this. We do. Um, there was public notification of neighbors within three hundred and fifty feet and notice in the for, Forest Lake times. And the, um, the so that basically what they like to do is move the dirt. This is not a, um, a normal sequence because oftentimes that the, uh, you know, this is just, you know, tied into part of the, uh, all of the project. Um, so there's a continuous activity in the site. However, um, the applicant um, has filed for the conditional use permit to locate self-storage, uh, self-storage facility on this property. The plan unit development to have more than one structure on, uh, you know, on the property as well as um, with the recent adoption of the twenty forty plan, there's a comp plan amendment required. Um, all along here, there were commercial properties that, um, after consideration and, um, of the market, their location, it appeared that none of these properties were going to be developed as commercial properties. Um, it's currently zoned um, highway business. Um, but with the new twenty-four comp plan, this shifted to high density residential. Um, if you recall, there was a comp plan amendment zoning map amendment for the Timber Ridge project. That was because that one did shift over to, um, you know, did the wish, was changed to a high density residential. Um, so and there's another parcel too, also just west of, uh, custom mold design that um, was, is, was changed from that, the highway business future land use to high density residential. Um, so those three big applications, the conditional use permit, the plan unit development um, and the comp plan amendment, um, are, um, will be on the May twenty-seventh plan commission agenda. Um, and so the, the applicant owner is working toward that full, um, project approval. Um, but at this point, um, we are just working with the, um, with the, uh, in the grading permit. The, um, we did receive a, um, a public comment, um.
Hey Donovan, can we hold the public comment and we'll read those two, um, just prior to the public hearing?
Certainly.
I think that's most appropriate.
Okay. Um, so the, uh, I'll just finish up here with, um, there is part of the zoning code, um, provisions for grain permits does have the Washington Conservation District review the, the application. So they have and provide comments. Um, also since, um, with the proximity to the wetlands and dealing with stormwater, uh, management facilities. Um, there has been a, actually several, um, permits with the Rice Street Watershed District. Um, one of them does relate to, uh, wetland delineation, then wetland replacement for the, uh, you know, for the proposed self-storage facility. And currently there is a cap rock, which is the conditional approval pending receipt of changes at, uh, permit. Well, it's, it's the kind of a half permit, um, that's been issued for the project. Um, they have not received their full, um, Rice Street Watershed District permit. Also Everton Avenue at this section is a county road. Uh, and so we've been in discussion with the county on what they, um, require. Because some work will be within the county right of way and the, um, uh, the staff recommendation is for approval. Um, with conditions related to Rice Street Watershed District permit being issued, Washington County's concerns or permits, uh, you know, addressed or permits can obtained. Um, an improvement, uh, agreement prepared by the city attorney executed along with a letter credit submitted. And, uh, grade permit expiration date, one year from planning commissioner approval. With that, I'm happy taking questions from the planning commission.
Are there questions from commissioners? Uh, Commissioner Young, I believe you just raised your hand.
Yep. Donovan, are they going to be required to replace the trees?
Um, I, no.
Okay. Don't we typically require that, especially when there are some, I, I did drive by the site yesterday. Uh, when there are high quality trees on the property?
Um, I, with, uh, looking at the, the, there are, there's a much higher threshold for tree removal within, um, commercial areas as well as, um, the um, the, the fact that the the property, you know, development, um, all that will be, um, with basically all the trees will be, all, all the land, there's no real buffer around. Meaning that all the tree will be, will be within thirty feet of, of the foundation of a structure. And that's generally what we allow for carving out of, of development. The, on the west side, and this is kind of getting ahead of us, but on the, the west side, you know, the site plan is proposing, you know, leaving a buffer of trees to, you know, for screening, for buffering with those, the residential neighbors on the west.
Um, and when I drove by yesterday, there was no sign there that said that there was going to be a neighborhood meeting. Um, and I believe that that is a requirement that if there's going to be a neighborhood meeting, that there be a sign to that effect on the property.
I put one there last week. I'll say.
There wasn't one yesterday and there wasn't one down by, um, headwaters at that property either.
Well, we, that, that one, um, is not up for a vote today.
I understand that.
Are there other questions of staff? Commissioner Batty?
Um, I'm just, I just, I got another computer here. So I just pulled up uh, the GIS map to look at that site in a little bit more detail and an aerial. I'm, you, you mentioned that there was going to be a buffer of trees on the west there, right? That's really not shown on the plan. I mean, they're showing buildings within a few feet of the, of, of the, uh, of the property line to the west there in, unless north is, you know, it looks to me like north is up on this plan. Yep. I mean, isn't that what you just said, uh, John or Donovan?
No, I was referring to on the west side. I believe that the applicant's proposing.
I'm talking about. That's what I'm talking about. Yeah. The west end, they're just, they're building right up to the property line there.
It's in, well, those, that's a proof of parking area. So they're not actually building that at this time.
Okay. All right. I'm sorry. I see the dashed lines though.
I believe that's a, that's a twenty foot, um, distance between that property line and that pavement edge, proposed pavement edge there.
Are there questions of staff? Mr. Keen?
Twenty feet is not a buffer. To me, twenty feet is not a buffer between commercial business and residential business or residential hu, housing. Twenty feet is really nothing there. So, um, are they, are they aware of down the road Everton's going to be rebuilt and there's going to be sidewalks and all that?
Yes, they are aware of that.
Other questions of staff on the report?
So.
Commissioner Batty?
Do, do you have any idea where they're, where they're at Donovan with the watershed here, you know, because you, they're up against wetlands and, uh, looks like they're going to fill some wetlands and I mean, they really can't, they can't start the grading until they have their watershed permit, right?
Correct. Yeah. And as of last Friday, there were a number of items to be completed for that. Um, but that is a, you know, what is a recommendation, staff recommendation is that they, uh, they, you know, obtained that, that permit prior to initiation of grading.
Okay.
Are there other questions of staff? I have one Donovan. I'm looking at the, um, the plan here. And to, tonight's motion is just for the grading permit and I understand that. Um, and we anticipate that they will submit an application at a future meeting to change the zoning here. So if, if we looked at this tonight and said, yep, we're fine with this grading, presuming that the, um, watershed district kind of gives the thumbs up on, on those challenges and, and, and the details along those lines. Um, but in two weeks or a month, or whenever that application comes, we decided that this property was more suitable in the zoning of the higher density residential that it is today. And we wanted to leave it at that, um, and not allow that change. Tell me what happens. I mean, do they have a graded property that they then? Or do they have a case to against the city saying, well, you approve the grading, but now you're not going to go to the next step? What happens?
Well, what happens is that um, with city approval and meeting those conditions and they begin creating activity, um, they can, they can, they can complete, uh, the grading plan. Um, the watershed rules require that any sort of soil disturbance um, that's been undisturbed for more than two weeks has to be stabilized. So at that point, um, this is, this, this is what will probably happen um, because of the delay of the, the longer review, um, for instance, for the PUD, that's, you know, total of four public meetings, um, as well as the comp plan amendment. That's the Met Council review. Um, that just getting through the city process probably is, you know, sometime in July, i- i- in the best case scenario. Um, so in the meantime, the applicant will have to hydro seed the site. So the soil will be stabilized. Um, trees, you know, for a good portion of the trees would be removed. And you know, each application stands on its own. Um, there's no guarantee that any future approvals will come. Um, and the applicant is taking a risk. Um, preparing the site with this, you know, putting, uh, uh, expending that cost to move the dirt and to, you know, shape the land for future development. Um, but that's something that, you know, that's a risk they, they undertake. Um, that's not an obligation for the city to follow with, uh, subsequent approvals on applications.
I appreciate that outline. Thank you. Were there other questions on the staff report? Commissioners? Seen none. Um, Dan Undem, can you pull up the applicant if they're available? Or their representative, whoever it is. I believe it's Jerry Anderson. You may have to unmute yourself and then we'll. We'll allow you to give a presentation or answer any questions that you might have heard from commissioners.
All right, can you hear me? Are you able to hear?
Okay, can hear you.
Okay, so actually, the review that Donovan just gave you is very accurate. First of all, in terms of the property. The applicant is looking to remove trees, grade the property and prepare the property for development.
Hey, Jerry, can I stop you just for one second? I thought you were the applicant, I should have looked at that on the, on the piece, can you just identify? Who you are in relation to the applicant?
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm.
Thank you.
A jam architects, I'm representing the applicant this evening. The applicant is Dick Beagini, and I am, been hired by Dick to represent him this evening, he is unavailable. So, at any rate, Donovan's description is very accurate. From the standpoint that we are on the planning commission meeting for the twenty sixth to review the project itself. We have full disclosure and full project documentation coming through on the twenty sixth. But in the meantime, we're trying to get the tree removal to proceed, we're trying to get the grading to proceed. And get the site prepared for development. The preparation of the site development is independent, actually, of whether we put the mini storages in or apartment buildings in. Or townhomes, whatever the case might be. The second thing I would like to mention is with respect to the property on the west, we are maintaining. If you look at the newest plan, and I'm not sure if Donovan has that available to him, but newest plan shows. At the close point, twenty-three and a half feet to the back of the curb. From the west property line. As you go south, it tapers a little bit and becomes slightly wider. But we're, the proposal that we have in, in our discussions with the three property owners that abut the property to the west. They would prefer that we place a fence five feet from the curb line. Leave the trees that are behind that, we have agreed to them with that and. Hopefully, they will be available here at the public hearing this evening. Certainly, they'll be available for tomorrow night with our neighborhood meeting regarding the process to go through. For, so that we can be on the agenda for the twenty-sixth. But basically, two of the three property owners have also approached the owner with the possibility of purchasing the remains of the wetlands. To preserve the wetlands, and that discussion is something the developer has agreed to them to enter into. The other items that I would like to bring up are, we have an existing. Approach and entrance into the project. The, the contractor who will be doing the grading has made application for. The new drive, which is being required by Washington County to be moved to the south. But the existing, we, we don't have to do any grading to. Enter the site, because that approach and that driveway is already in. The new driveway is part of the application that we have into the county at this point in time. We're simply waiting for them to fulfill that permit to the contractor. The second thing is. We have a SWIP plan, the contractor already has the SWIP, he has the permit for the SWIP. We have purchased all of the wetland credits from the state of Minnesota. We have permission from them to proceed, we've been through the approvals with the DNR. We've been through the approvals with Army Corps of Engineers, we have all of those letters, all those approvals are in place. The only two items that are outstanding relative to cap rock with the. With the wetlands. Relative are, number one. We have to provide them with a letter of credit, which will be available on Friday. We also have that same letter of a credit, a letter, credit that's going to be going to the city of Forest Lake relative to this permit. For twenty-seven thousand dollars, which will be available on Friday, signing of the. Development agreement, which we are prepared to do. And the only other item, I believe, outstanding with the. With the wetlands issue is the maintenance agreement, which has been dropped off. And paid for and is awaiting documentation from Washington County. So as far as the Rice Creek watershed is concerned, we have two issues, one is the maintenance agreement being documented and recorded. Which took place a couple of days ago. And the, that's probably available via the internet right now. And the second issue would be the letter of credit, which will be available on Friday.
Does that conclude your presentation, Mr. Anderson?
Uh, yes, unless you have any specific questions you would like me to answer.
Our commission loves to ask questions, hang on, so Commissioner Akeem?
Yes, Jerry, when you mentioned on that west side. You said it's twenty-three feet from the property line to the back of that curb line?
Yes, that's, uh, on the, on the north side, it's a little bit narrower than it is on the south side. Cause that property line runs at a little bit of a bias from north to south. And twenty-three and a half feet to the back of the curb at the north side of the curb. It's slightly wider than that, the south side, I, I doubt it's more, much more than a foot.
And then you're going to put a fence in five feet from the back of that curb line?
Yes, they've asked us to put a fence in five feet from the back of the curb line, that is.
And they're, they're fine with that, that's only eighteen feet.
That's correct, yep, they, you know, the, the thing of it is, is a lot of the homeowners along that side have been. They've got boat storage and they've got all sorts of things going on back there, we're not concerned about that. We are happy to provide them with whatever their needs are, the, the owner of this project is not requiring them to remove stuff. From his property, even though there might be some infractions. And so the, the homeowners, generally those three homeowners that abut our property are, are happy with what's happening here.
Okay.
Were there other questions from commissioners to the applicant? Commissioner Batty?
Jerry, I'm. Interested to know how the site, how the grading cut, fill balances out on this site.
Well, we have, we have balanced the fill, the property has been. The, the grading is done by a company called. Chuck, it's actually done by Chuck Plow Engineering Company. And we have had a grading contractor. Who the owner has hired and is awaiting is, aren't construction. And they have worked together to balance the cut and, and fill on the site. As closely as possible, we still are going to have to import some soils, but for the most part, the grading plan that's proposed. If, if you go along the north property line from east to west. The, the first hundred and fifty feet from the east going to the west ranges. In, from our property line to our grade ranges from three point five feet of difference. To about five and a half feet of difference. Now, the difference being that our finished grade is below the grade at the property line. There are two existing lines of. Retaining walls along that side, when you get to the middle third of the property. We're actually looking at a range of elevation difference from our finished grade to the existing grade. At the top of that property line, we're actually looking at a difference of approximately six feet. To almost eleven feet. And then the back third of the property, as you go west. Again, starts to drop back down and it's approximately six feet of variation. So the rough lines of our buildings are hardly even visible. When you're standing above the property line to the north of our property line.
So you're, you're, I, I'm just looking at this, the grading plan, it's, you're drawing C two here. And you, you're showing, it looks like one retaining wall that goes the full length of the property, am I reading that correctly?
That is correct, we are building a new retaining wall below the existing retaining walls. So our new retain wall will be approximately four feet high. Which means that for the most part, we are only sloping across that ten feet up to the property line. For the most part, we're sloping up either somewhat flat or up two feet. The middle third of that is a little steeper than that.
Okay, so the, the, where there shows a double retaining wall along there, that's, th- those two pieces are. Retaining walls on somebody else's property.
There, that is correct, they're, they're right on the property line supposedly, and they, they coexist in conjunction. With the apartment buildings and the townhomes to the north of us.
Are there questions of commissioners to the applicant? Commissioner Batty, sorry, I thought you were done.
Yeah, well, it's okay, I, I knew I had another question, I just didn't remember what it was. Jerry, explain this proof of parking on the west end there.
Well, the proof of parking is, and that's something that we're looking at in conjunction with the PUD. That will be coming before you on the twenty-sixth, it doesn't really relate to the grading plan itself, but. Your, your, your code for storage units requires that. There's one parking stall for each end units of storage that's provided. And. We're showing proof of parking because we really don't want to build that parking unless it's absolutely necessary. The, the, the parking, putting parking spots in a storage facility like this does two things. And both of those things are running against what you would prefer to happen. First of all, in a storage facility like this, there's no outdoor storage allowed. If we put parking spots in, we're going to have people abandoning. Fixtures and appliances and whatever. That we may or may not be able to catch on camera, simply because they can't, you might find abandoned cars.
Okay, okay, well, we'll, we'll talk about that on the.
But, but the proof of parking shows that we can accommodate the forty-one stalls that are required. However, we would prefer not to do that, that is part of the PUD that we are making application for.
Other questions of the applicant? Not seen any, so we will move into the public hearing. Dan, do you want to go over the process and? If you have anyone at City Hall there that will speak first, and then the order of which they will be brought online?
Right now, there is nobody at City Hall who wishes to speak. If you're in as an attendee, I ask you right now to raise your hand, if you wish to speak to the public hearing. I will go in order, I have, first, I have a Craig Shield who has raised his hand. I will move him in as of right now to be able to speak.
Hey, Dan, I was looking for more the process, and if you could just read the list so that they, they can all know upfront where they land in it. Donovan has a letter he has to read, and I have one as well.
Sorry about that, I jumped.
That's okay.
The gunner, second, if you want to wait, if you want to take care of the attendees, it would be, the next one in line would be Michelle Von Wall, the after Craig.
All right, Donovan, did you want to read your letter first?
Yes, I will do so. This letter. Is from Rick and Pat Anderson. I don't have their address here. Greetings, my wife and I are concerned about the path the planning commission is going down with the proposal for a storage facility on Everton. We realize that they are tasked with working on such projects, but the concern I have is that we, we live under a mile from the proposed site. Have not heard anything about this prior to yesterday. No mailers, nothing online, no information or any requests on public input on the project. Our city has the ability to do great things with the undeveloped land and turn Forest Lake into a model city. The problem with that is, it appears that they, the planning commission and council are headed down a path of only looking at low income housing. And light industrial type development. Walk that piece of land that they want to put the storage unit on, tell me that isn't a great location for a city park. Its accessibility to the community around it via entrance trails that could be made, there's room for a small parking area. And the views are wonderful. I don't even live on the border properties, but I can only imagine how they will feel about the change in views they have of the wetland turning into storage. In these days of social isolation, there needs to be a greater emphasis on talking to the community about any development proposals. That are brought forward. That was, that was what was submitted.
All right, thank you, I'm going to read one that was passed on to me from Mayor Bean. And she indicated that it came through her Facebook page from a Lisa Gaugn, G-A-U-G-H-N. I do not have an address, but I believe the person lives nearby. It says, Mara, I live in a neighborhood behind Menards, which is very close to the proposed storage building construction. Most of the residents in this development were not notified of the public meeting tonight. We are all concerned as this will decrease our home value for one. In addition, the traffic on Everton is unbelievable at its best. Adding this construction would only add to traffic problems we are already facing. I find it discouraging that the city would rather put up storage buildings than build another park, which we desperately need. We have had so many apartments added to our development and nothing new added to our park system. Unfortunately, due to previous commitments, we are unable to attend tonight, please take some of this into consideration for tonight, tonight's meeting. And it was from Lisa Gaugn. Those were the, the two people that I'm aware of that asked to have comments put into the. Public record, and we will now open up the public hearing, I believe Craig Schneel here up first. We're going to allow you to speak, we, we usually give you a few minutes, generally speaking, in the public hearing for, for, for you and. The others up next, typically commissioners don't interact during public hearings, we, we tend to be listeners. At this point, although if you have a, a technical question, sometimes staff will jump in and answer those, so go ahead, Craig. Your name and address for the record to start.
My name is Craig Shield, I live at two-two-zero-nine-three Ethan Court. I'm also with the other homeowners that live on the west side of the proposed property. I have had some conversations with the builder, Dick. And some of the things that we talked about were true, he did say that he was going to leave a twenty-three foot buffer back there. And not remove any of the trees, but he, I was under the impression that he wanted to put up a chain link fence. Rather than a proposed from you guys, a pine fence. And I had agreed with that, but I thought that that would have been on the backside of the twenty-three feet. Rather than us looking at a chain link fence and then looking into some trees. So our biggest concern here is, it's not that the mini storage is going in per se. Cause something's going to go there, and I guess we'd rather see that, but what, what is our view going to look like moving forward, are we gonna? That, that's our biggest concern, people next door, they're gonna, they are going to be looking at the south end of the property. And if there's not, if there's a chain link fence running down the entire south side of it. They're going to see when the trees are going to be seen, all the mini storage, they're going to see the dealerships, all the bright lights from the dealerships. That we hadn't seen in the past, the tops of the townhouses, as we all will. The tops of the townhouses, as we all will. So our concerns are just what, what kind of buffers are we going to get when this is all done? You have anything to add?
Yeah, sure. I'll add a little bit.
I'm going to interrupt you for one second. If you could state your name and your address for the record, please.
Yep, my name is Jim Liddy Coats. This is my wife, Emily Liddy Coats. We live at 22091 Ethan Court. We are the farthest south house in the cul-de-sac that borders this property. My wife and I actually just bought this house in December. And a big selling point of this house was the marshland and the tree line behind the house. It's gorgeous nature views. We have lots of wildlife. And that seems like it's all going away now. It's a little bit concerning because it's a residential area. And we are now facing a mini storage in our backyard. So we are concerned with what our property value looks like in the future. If we go to sell our house, what that's going to look like for people who walk through and see many storage in the backyard instead of a nice nature views like what we thought Forest Lake was all about. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
And was it Emily? Did you have comments as well?
I just echo like Craig and Jim have already shared. We have a lot of wildlife back there, so I am concerned what's going to happen to them when all these trees are removed.
Thank you, Dan. Do you want to bring up the, I'm sorry, I didn't know there was a fourth person. Say your name and address for the record.
My name is Sharon Kanabi, and my address is 22095 Ethan Court. And I am the northernmost house on the west side of the cul-de-sac. So my backyard also will face this proposed mini storage. And I'm concerned about the trees. I look into, I bought the lot for the trees, and now I'm going to look at buildings and lights shining into my windows with no buffer. Jerry had stated, I believe his name was Jerry, had stated that we, he had talked to us about a buffer and all that. None of us three in the cul-de-sac had spoken to him, have agreed to anything. We are not okay with what they have proposed. We moved here for the scenic views, for the trees, for the view. And it's being ripped away from us. We're not okay with this. We were willing to work with him. But what he stated when he, it was his time to talk was not what we agreed to. We've never spoken with him. So we're kind of in the dark with all of it.
Is there anyone else in that group there?
Nope, that's it.
All right, thank you. Dan, can you bring up then the next person? Dan Undem?
Yep, I just did the promotion. They should be coming in now.
All right, we have Michelle Von Wall, I believe. If you could state your, state your name and address, and how many people are there with you?
I have my partner Vic Stark is with me. My name is Michelle Von Wall. I'm the property owner in the Gateway Green Cottage Community. 22291 Cameo Court. I am the one that is on the northeast side of the grading project. I've heard a lot of feedback from Mr. Anderson regarding the west side. But I too, as a property owner, have great concerns about the loss of trees and the clearing of trees and the privacy and protection of my property value, as well as sound barrier right on the corner of Everton. I too am in great agreement of the need for a, a community park in place of, for that area with all of the development that has happened. So I just wanted to, my partner Vic Stark might be adding to my, the concerns I have regarding that.
Okay.
Vic, go ahead. If you could just state your name and address for the record.
My name's Vic Stark, and I live at 32 Northwest Fourth Avenue, Forest Lake. There are a few technical points that I wanted to bring up after reviewing the plans that were submitted. One of the things that came up that I noticed immediately was that the plan, I'm going to look at C three. I think it's on a couple other plans also. But the existing, quote, existing retaining wall shown that runs the length of the Gateway Green project along its south property line, which would be the north property line of the proposed project. That does not exist in reality. On, there is, there are retaining walls back there along that line or near that line that are shown. Those are the ones that are, there's one. Jerry referred to about a third of the way through, across the project from east to west. You'll see there are two lines of retaining wall shown. The northernmost one does exist. And then again, further to the west, towards the west corner, is another place where two retaining walls are shown. And that northern wall does exist. But the southern line of wall that is shown along the south line of the Gateway Green project does not exist. And it's called out with top of wall and bottom of wall elevations that I don't know where those were, where those came from, if they came from the original Gateway Green construction documents. But they, that wall simply does not exist. So one of the questions we have is if that wall, you know, i- is not there, would that wall have to be built by the people that are, by Mr. Biagani's company? Also, some other, some other points that we wanted to make where, yes, that, that all, you're talking about the tree buffer line on the west side. Where in, in what's shown in this, these documents is that the entire south property line will lose all tree buffers. And so any privacy and or for both sound and visual privacy for anybody who has a townhome or apartment building facing south as Michelle does, will lose all of that. And there is, there's nothing shown in here that would replace it. So, you know, we do have some questions. You know, that the face, the southern face of these buildings, the townhomes are about 20 feet from the property line. And looking at this drawing, then the next, it within three or four feet would be the northern edge of the paved area for the mini storage. And then about maybe 20 feet more, 24 feet more, I'm not sure how wide the, the driving areas are actually, there, there, it's not shown. I'm, I'm going by the, you know, using a, measuring it with a scale ruler. But then the buildings begin. So there is no room there for any kind of tree buffer. And if there are no tree buffers, if there's some kind of security fence, how tall would it be? And would it actually do anything for our visual and or sound barrier loss in this area? I have a couple other notes. Excuse me, I have to find them. We're working at an, at an ad hoc tabletop. No, 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 no. Words?
I'd like to just, while he's looking for his notes, I'd like to just emphasize once again, as a property owner, my concern for my property value, but also the great need that we have with all the development of residential apartment buildings in this area, the great need for a community park.
Okay, I'm back. This is Vic again. So what's, looking at the, the, the plans that were included that we were able to look at. It doesn't, it, it, it shows pretty much all trees being cleared from the north face or the northern line of the property for the structures, which looks like it would include every tree that is in existence for Michelle's south perspective, south facing. I pointed out the retaining wall issue. I'm not sure where that confusion came from. And I've also mentioned the security slash privacy fence. The location of any fencing has not been shown on any of the plans that I've, I've seen. And I'd like to know what those are and what the materials intended to be are and the height. And I know that this is getting beyond the grading part of the project. We're getting into the actual project itself. But I do have questions, and I think it was brought up on the staff notes on page thirty or thirty-one. Of the staff notes, there is a question regard, actually, it's page thirty-two of the, of the staff notes that were included in tonight's pack, uh, package. There's no landscape plan being shown at this point, which might include any trees that were intended to be planted. And that I suppose would be the turf areas. And I, there is no lighting plan or photometric plan to, that has been included. And it'd be nice to know, you know, if this project were to move forward and be built, how much light noise would be expected by people who no longer would have any kind of buffer there? And I think that I believe those are all of my points. Michelle?
About covers it.
All right, thank you. Dan, can we pull up the next person to speak?
I believe that was all I had for hands raised to who wanted to speak.
All right, I'm going to open up the chat. If there's somebody else that wishes to speak as part of the public hearing, please write that in the chat. Either openly to everybody or to City of Forest Lake or pick me in there. I'm going to give you about 30 seconds or so before I close the public hearing.
Mr. Sheal has his hand up again.
You want to bring him back on?
I can do that.
Mr. Sheal, you're on unmute, but go ahead.
This is Jim Liddy Coats again. I'm the southernmost house in the cul-de-sac 22091 Ethan. And I just wanted to make a note. I know earlier it was said that normally with these types of projects, the trees are replaced with the ones that are cut out. And I just wanted to, you know, throw up the question that why is this not the norm for this project? I understand it's the marsh, it's the wetland. There's no other place to plant these trees, but that should have been taken into consideration long before this point. It's, you know, like we said, it's not fair for us to have all these trees gone in the buffer, the light pollution from the car dealerships, the light pollution from 35, all the cars. It's not fair for the townhomes that are bordering this that will now look into our backyards. Pretty huge. So we just take that into consideration. And the planning needs dearly look deep into this. So that's all I have.
All right, thank you. I believe I saw in the chat feature that the applicant's representative, Jerry Anderson, wished to speak in the public hearing as well?
Yes.
You can go ahead.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So first of all, in terms of the homes to the west, I wasn't proposing that I was the one that had the discussion with them. It's my understanding that Mr. Dick Bea Genie, the owner, was the one that processed discussions with those people. I was simply referring to discussions that he informed me of. I'm sorry that Dick was not available this evening. Secondly, we are not looking at placing a fence on the property line where you would look at the fence and the trees would be behind. We're looking at placing the fence five feet behind our curb line to allow for some snow storage when we plow. So you would be looking at eighteen and a half to nineteen and a half or 20 feet of trees and then the fence line. Secondly, relative to some of the comments that Mr. Vic Stark had to make. The, the retaining wall that's shown that goes along the entire north property line is a new wall that's being proposed in conjunction with our grading. And that wall is to be constructed. It is not existing there. We simply show the two existing walls, and then we show our proposed wall that's being constructed there as well. Our curb line is 10 feet off the north property line. So there is a, two five foot buffers along that side. The townhomes that they're referring to, that they live in, are actually somewhere between three and a half and five and a half feet above our finished grade. So we also propose a fence line, screen fences along those lines of where those townhomes exist there on the east end and also on the west end. So we are looking at providing screen fences. If you, if that screen fence were six feet high, we would have approximately nine and a half feet of screening that you would have available to you in terms of our existing buildings or our proposed buildings. So you would not be looking at the buildings. Also, any of the light lines that would be generated from lights on those buildings for circulation in the parking lot and whatnot. Those lights are all at a point where you would not get any direct light at all. There would be no points of light to any of the homeowners along the north and west property lines. Those, especially the north line, anywhere from three and a half feet to 11 feet. Those lights are going to be just above the doors at seven or eight feet high. And they're going to be well below the grade, much less the fence lines that will be provided in those installations. A lot of, Vic, a lot of the items that you brought up are, are items that relate to the 26th Planning Commission meeting. And they're not a part of this particular submittal simply because they're a part of the PUD and the CUP application.
Was that all you had for the public hearing, Mr. Anderson?
Yes, at this time, unless anybody has additional questions for me.
The commission, the commission may, so hang on. Is there anybody else that's raised their hand? Dan?
At this point, no.
I see.
Michelle just raised her hand one more time.
If you can bring Michelle on. Michelle, you'll need to unmute yourself, and then you can go ahead.
Okay. Hi. Yep, my question is in regard to the, the property owners that were consulted on the west side. I did not have that opportunity here on the northeast. I, in fact, I just learned of this meeting within the last week. So that would have been beneficial to get a scope, or it seems like there's some consideration some of the homeowners, and I would like to be included in that if this project goes through. I guess that would be my last comment. And thank you, by the way, for inviting me in to have a voice.
And, and this is Vic Stark again. Thank you, Jerry, for clarifying the, the retaining wall issue. When I looked at the plans, I did not see anything that, that in the legend that said that there was a proposed wall for the project. All I saw was an existing wall notation in the legend, and so I assumed. And so I assumed wrongly that the wall that was being shown there was supposed to exist already. So thank you for clarifying that, Jerry, and uh, thank you for clarifying the other things regarding the lights and the fencing, being that none of that stuff was shown on that on the grading plan, which I expect it wouldn't be. But those were things that were brought up in the staff report, both the landscape plan, a lighting plan. Those things will be covered, I believe, in a future meeting. I do have a question or a comment in that, yes, the the wall and it, you know, a a wall with a fence on it will probably mean that if we're looking straight out of our first floor window, we won't be looking at directly into the the doors of any buildings or light right at the buildings. But I do believe that we will be looking down on the whole property project, that we will be basically looking across the tops of the roofs instead of looking into a wild and wooded area that has had a lot of wildlife and it and a lot of enjoyment for the people that live here. I'm also would like to comment, I'm very surprised that there are not more people that are involved, that that live in these townhomes and apartments involved in this meeting. That's kind of surprises me a lot. I don't know if it was because of a lack of communication or if we have a lot of people here that are renters and don't think that they really have any, uh, any skin in the game, so to speak. Again, thank you for inviting us to be able to address everybody publicly. And thank you.
Thank you, Devon Wald household. Dan, is there anybody else that's raised their hand?
Yeah, Mr. Sheal raised his hand one more time.
Do you want to bring him up? Mr. Sheal, you'll need to unmute yourself and then you can go ahead.
This is Jim Liddy Coat again. And I want to make a comment that we were not, the cul-de-sac here, Ethan Court, we were not contacted prior to this. The only reason that we knew about this was when my wife and I moved in, I noticed pink wetlands delination flags within the marsh. And I contacted Donovan back in November and he alerted me to the project. And we had been in contact since, as well as my neighbors in the cul-de-sac. So we did not receive, you know, special notification or anything. There was, you know, what I I think would agree that there is a lack of communication up until about a week ago or a week, week and a half ago with these notices that went out. So that's all I had to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Shield Household. Dan, is there anybody else that's raised their hand?
Uh, no, not at this time.
And if there is someone else that wishes to speak, please make a comment or in the chat box or raise your hand. Leave it open for about thirty seconds before we close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Still have no one, Dan?
No one at this point.
All right. We will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Mr. Andam, I I thank you for running that. It seemed pretty smooth from my end for a public hearing remote. I think this is the first one the the city has has ever done. So, um, commissioners, do you have comments or a motion that would be appropriate at this time?
Um, could I interrupt just to make one announcement that would relate to the public testimony?
Yes.
The project team, Jerry Anderson and Dick Bea Jeanie are holding a neighborhood meeting virtually tomorrow evening at six-thirty related to the the PUD, CUP, Comp Plan Amendment applications. They'll be on the the next planning commission agenda. So if you've not received that mailing, I encourage anyone to reach out to me by my email address is on the city website in the zoning division. And I can give you information on how to read, to log into that Zoom meeting tomorrow night, six-thirty. That's May fourteenth.
And thank you, Donovan. And I'll clarify some of the communication piece too. It was brought to my attention yesterday by Commissioner Young that there there may have been a need or a desire to have expanded communication. And I suspect the city met the the legal requirements of publishing in the newspaper, which very few people probably read, and posting at City Hall, where of course no one is going at the moment, and those sorts of pieces. But I did post it on the the relatively popular Forest Lake Happenings Facebook page. And I posted it on Nextdoor widely across the the city for anyone that's on those social media apps. This meeting, tomorrow's meeting, another neighborhood meeting next week, the other public hearing we held tonight. If if someone has a suggestion of other ways we can communicate, you know, please send the mayor, send send myself, somebody at City Hall a message on how we can expand that. I don't think it's the intent of of anyone at City Hall or this commission to to not have these meetings involve the public. So we'll open it up to commissioners. I see Commissioner Batty's hand raised. Do you want to go?
Um, just on that point to start with, Donovan, don't we, are we, are you saying that we don't have as part of our ordinance, a notification of adjacent property owners within a certain distance to the property?
No, we certainly do have that. And if we, you could even have some some testimony from Karen about the number of notifications we sent out for for this project in particular, with the number of townhomes, the Gateway Green, sorry?
They were sent out.
Certainly, yes. And it's all, yeah, it's code code required, three hundred and fifty feet within the subject property. So we did everything from, you know, the Wilcox Chevrolet to the Gateway Green projects, MinDOT, Washington County, then all those, all those, um, other, you know, like a good number of properties along Ethan Avenue, Ethan Court, a little bit of Evergreen Circle. So there was, I believe it was about, I think it was over a hundred notices they were sent out.
I'm comfortable with that. That's fine. Okay. Okay. In regard to the, this is another procedural thing. Do you, do you know yet, Donovan, what the drawing package looks like for what we're going to see on the twenty-sixth here? And, you know, I I look at this like plan and I and I understand, you know, width of drive and size of these units and that kind of stuff. And this thing has been shoehorned into that plan. And I know that the developer is just gonna cry uncle if we, uh, you know, if some of these issues that have been brought up here tonight are going to be addressed in the way that this thing is designed. And I guess here's my concern. If we, if we approve this grading plan, that automatically takes with it the 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 tree removal goes right along with, you know, obviously has to happen before the grading can start. And that's, that's my concern here is that if we approve this thing the way this is tonight, they're going to come in there and they're going to come, they're going to clear cut that entire site except for a few trees on the west end there. And I don't know, I just, I'm, I'm, I don't want to come off as being anti-development here because you know I'm not. But this, this troubles me. This, this site plan troubles me here because it is so tightly, I'll use the same word again, shoehorned onto this site, you know. And I understand that and the the north-south issue is 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 the crucial one. But the length of this thing can be varied and they could be, we could place a condition on this thing to have them move away from that west property line. It would, let's see, the, um, that's four, uh, five units wide. So for every I'm guessing those units are what, twelve, what, twelve to fifteen feet wide, something like that? Not much more than that. So it taking out one, you know, vertical row of units would move it fifteen feet further away from that, um, that west property line. And I'm, you know, I can tell you that on on the twenty-sixth, you know, I'm going to raise some of these issues because I I just think they've, I don't know if they're just trying to see if they can, you know, I understand that, you know, that economics is a good bit of this thing, but I I find it hard to believe that this thing has to be shoehorned in there as tightly as it is. I understand from the north-south dimension that that pretty much has to work the way they've got it shown. But from the, in the east-west direction, it it could be shortened up so that it wasn't as close to that west property line as they're currently showing it. In my mind, if if they're asking for proof of parking and then they're going to put up a, you know, they're going to tell the owners, they're not going to cut down trees and they're going to put up a fence. That's, you know, that that doesn't, that doesn't fly with me. You know, I think if they're going to show proof of parking, they're going to, they show proof of parking. And I absolutely think that there has to be some kind of a west end buffer on this project that's permanent, that they're going to be there forever regardless of how much parking they need.
Well, Commissioner Batty, I think you do, interesting point, and this is a unique application since it is, what we are reviewing is a grading permit, the the ability to remove trees and grade the site according to the submitted plan. However, we also have, um, you know, submitted for future, you know, planning commission agenda, a plan that is, is, you know, almost, I haven't done a full review, but looks almost, it's very similar, if not identical as far as, you know, layout of the of the, you know, the units, stormwater entrance, you know, fence line. I mean, there is a fence in that in that plan. And that is part of a PUD, is a part of a PUD application. And a purpose of the planned unit development application, you know, is to provide benefits that and will provide flexibility for the developer for certain criteria and then also provide benefits that the benefit the developer, but also benefit the public as well. And one of them is to preserve, enhance and protect desirable site characteristics, open spaces and valuable natural resources. And obviously, that much of the site is wetlands and there's, there is some proposed wetland replacement, but that, I don't know the percentage, but it's, you know, it's a slight minority of the total wetland on the site. So it's really, you know, that that well-in area is largely being preserved. The the, there is a provision within the the planning and development zoning text that the design of a PUD shall take into account the relationship of the site to surrounding areas. The perimeter of the PUD shall be designed to minimize any undesirable impact of the development on adjacent properties and conversely, to minimize any undesirable undesirable impact of adjacent land use and development characteristics on the PUD. So, you know, working both ways. So, you know, I believe it's within the, you know, understanding that this is a grading permit, also a, there is, you know, for a future, you know, near future consideration of planning and development, it'd be within planning commissioner's authority to take into consideration this PUD application and set conditions of approval that would be consistent with the PUD overlay district.
Donovan, um, what is the zoning district of this property at the moment?
It's highway business.
And what is it in the twenty forty comp plan that we have coming up?
It is high, it's a, it's a future land use of high-density residential.
Okay. Now, the woodland preservation policy, I heard you answer a question earlier referencing that the the standards, I I'm paraphrasing, but the standards were lower because it's commercial or along those lines. Knowing that our twenty forty comp plan is coming up, what would the woodland preservation policy have on this property, knowing that that would be the zoning for this district?
Um, the well, the zoning, actual rezoning won't occur for, you know, maybe a year or so. So we have to kind of live with, we have to apply the zoning that is current, what the zoning map says, which is that that be to highway business. The, looking at the the woodland preservation rules, which, you know, do define a significant woodland as fifteen thousand square feet in size, that's, you know, which which is about a third of an acre. Looking at the submitting, submitted survey of existing conditions, a, I did a calculation and it, I do not believe that the, um, you know, that the existing woodlands reach that fifteen thousand square foot threshold.
So we, so we essentially have no policy that would protect any type of tree buffer like this on property lines unless they meet fifteen thousand square foot threshold?
Yes, basically. And then if, you know, within this, with the future high-density residential, you know, assuming that that becomes multiple family zoning district, they could remove up to fifty percent of the trees and not and not be subject to tree replacement. But if, um, you know, within the PUD rules, I mean, I I think those can be applied to require some tree replacement or if it's not, or or if it is removed, a replacement of the trees so that the the impact on neighboring properties is lessened.
But we don't have a PUD in front of us today.
Correct.
And if we approve the the grading plan, as Commissioner Batty stated, they can essentially come in, clear cut, regrade, and then what, we tell them to plant a few six-foot trees? I mean, and and I don't mean to put you in the spot. I it's it's not your proposal, Donovan. I'm, I'm just saying, I don't know that this is necessarily the best pathway of getting where we're at. Or I almost wish we had everything. It's nice knowing what the developer is going to bring because I have less concern about approving a grading. I have more concern about a lot of the things that are coming forward. And quite frankly, a lot of things that people brought forward that I just don't have answers to, like the the photometric lighting plan, sound barriers. You know, I I have oftentimes, when we went through our twenty forty comp plan, talked about the the buffers and the importance of of looking at policy between industrial or commercial or business and residential. And, you know, this is exactly where that those two things are are coming up. I think it's one of the reasons exactly why we in our twenty forty are moving that towards a residential zoning because quite frankly, it fits that neighborhood a whole lot better. I'm not saying that a mini storage wouldn't work here, but you know, I I think we've, as a community, spent a lot of time in those pieces. But another piece that came up, and I'll ask another question, the community park. Correct me if I'm wrong, but if I remember right, on the west side of thirty-five, there is only one proposed park in the comp plan, and that is north of In the comp plan, and that is north of Broadway. And if I remember right, from park board discussions in the past, that is because there is. A park literally in the neighborhood right to the west, I believe. Named after a fallen officer we had a number of years ago. Um, is that, is that a correct statement, Donovan?
Yes, that is, yeah.
So there is no community park planned for this area and, um. Whether, whether it's a mini storage that goes here, a residential piece, whatever it is that goes in here. We have no long-term plans for a park in this area beyond the one that's already there.
That is correct. Um, I'll also add, as, as part of, um. Discussions I've had with Dick Biagini, the owner, is that initially he did try to put a multiple family project. More that enters, there's kind of a tri- triangular shaped piece of high ground. And he did create some concept plans and could not, could not make it work to his satisfaction. So that's when they shifted to the, uh, self-storage, um, project plan.
Thank you. Were there other comments from commissioners, or we certainly can entertain a motion. Commissioner Keen?
Okay, now, I know this is just a grading plan, but I think this is in the back of everyone's mind is the next step. And if you look at the west side, those, all those storage facilities, or he's got the three of them there. Uh, if they just, something to think about is if they just backed off a couple of doors on each one of those ends. Now you're now looking at an 18-foot barrier from property line. You know, to the back of the curb or to the back of the fence. Uh, it gives them a little more room, and while they're grading, if there's some decent trees in there, they could save them. So they don't have to go on by and plant trees later. So just. I'm just throwing that out there. I know it's a grading plan and not step two yet, so.
I agree, Commissioner, I agree, Commissioner Keen, um, I, I think there, there is definitely things to do and. You know, I, I'm not gonna call anybody out of order that's talking about things that's coming up in, in the future on this particular plan, because the developer has. Has presented it to us as to what it is. And if it even remotely comes close to the grading plan, I think it's worth the discussion tonight. The, um, in, in, in more direct reference to the grading plan, another thing they could do is. Move, I believe it's called Pond One, um, it's, uh, kind of on the, the west side. Of the mini storages, they could move that pond, um, between the end and. Those trees causing an even larger buffer to the west and having a straight pass-through road that doesn't curve around a pond. My suspicion is it'd actually be cheaper for the developer to put the pond over there. It would create a bigger buffer. And it would probably create greater uniformity of a mini storage, um, that I'm not completely sold on yet. That's, that's one idea. On the north side, they. Potentially could move ponds up there causing a greater buffer. In, in that direction, and I'm sure that would shrink some of their. Their hopes to have as many mini storage pieces on that site as they have. The proof of parking on the far west side, um, I'm extremely concerned about that, as Commissioner Batty said. Um, of putting a proof of parking that would take away a feature that they're essentially using to accommodate neighbors. In all honesty, Commissioners, I'm not ready to support this tonight outside of a table motion. But I'm looking forward to any of your comments. Commissioner Miller?
I think I would agree, um, Eric, Commissioner Lagness, with, uh, what you just said. It seems really out of order that we're seeing this grading plan before we actually see the plan come forward with, with the grading plan. And I would not be opposed to, to not voting on this and, and tabling this to be brought back. Uh, with the actual developing plans, uh, so we can look at the whole piece as, as one and make some decisions.
Com- Commissioner Young, I see you had your hand raised, and I apologize if that was sitting there for a while. I might have missed it.
No, I haven't been there for a while. I wanted to let, let this play out. Um, I am, I, I'm not ready to do the grading plan. I'm going to make a motion to table. We have not had the neighborhood meeting. We have not had, um, we don't know whether or not we're going to be.
Commissioner Young, right, did you make the motion, or are you saying that you're going to?
I'm going to.
Thank you.
I'm going to, all right? At, at the end of the sentence. We have not, Mr. Batty, um, we have, we have not.
He's right, you're, you're kind of pushing it cuz you're not supposed to do that by Robert's rules. So if you don't tell us, you're probably within the compliance of that.
Point taken. Motion to table.
There's a motion to table. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, Commissioner Batty seconded. A motion to table is non-debatable, so, uh, Karen, can you please take a roll call? Um, hey, what, one, one second, um, a motion to table requires a, a time definite. Um, Commissioner Young, can you clarify your motion to state your table?
I am tabling this motion until after the. The finalization of the, um. Plan for development. It does not need a date certain, um, it can be, it can also be a, um. A series of events. And for us to, to take a look at this seriously, we really need to understand much better. What the plan for this property is.
Commissioner Batty, does your second stand?
Um. I, I don't know that I understood. I, I mean, Donovan early, uh, let me just discuss this for a second.
We, we can discuss table motions.
Okay, but just an understanding here of what, what, okay, all right, yeah.
If I, well, if I could clarify, the final approval will not, city for the final PUD. Won't, you know, even by the, you know, best case scenario, will not occur until, um, sometime in July. Just understand this is, you know, preliminary PUD that's coming before the planning commission on the 27th. It'll go to then city council on the 8th. Then they'll have to address, you know, do a resubmital and address. Um, the applicant will, you know, resubmit based on the feedback they received at the preliminary. And so then, you know, that's gonna have to push, um, probably to the first July. Plan Commission meeting, um, the, um, and then, then final, you know. The second July, uh, City Council meeting on the, on the, the 20th. So, um, please be aware, um. Uh, with the motion of what, of what date you mean, and please be specific with that.
Um, the, the motion, as student correctly stated, does actually not need a date. It can be a point in time. Um, Commissioner Batty, does your second stand with her clarification of the motion?
Yes.
Okay, it's non-debatable. Karen, can you please take a roll call?
Commissioner.
Hi.
Commissioner Keen.
Hi.
Commissioner Brink.
Hi.
Commissioner Miller.
Hi.
Commissioner Batty.
Hi.
And Chair Lagness.
Hi, motion carries, um. We, we can't further discuss this, but I, I will, um, clarify to the public that doesn't understand what happened cuz that was. Movements that don't commonly occur in, in meetings. We have essentially set this aside. To a point in the future when something else occurs. Um, you, you can reach out to staff if you want further clarification on when that might happen. But we're not going to be able to discuss that tonight in this meeting, um, because you can't discuss a table motion after it's occurred. We will move on to the next agenda item. Which. Looking in front of me here, sorry, bear with me, um, the Headwaters 123 Property Comprehensive Plan Amendment. And it's noted as discussion only on the agenda. Donovan, do you wanna kick us off on that?
That thing in this thing.
Certainly. The, um.
They've just tabled everything.
If I could.
Um, could, could you hold on? Uh, Dan, could you please mute the background noise? Thank you. Donovan, please continue.
Certainly, I'd like to present. Um, for discussion purposes only, this is not a public hearing. The, uh, um, a reconsideration of the Headwaters 123 Conference of Plan Amendment. Um, as you recall, at the last planning commission meeting, we discussed this and, and rather kind of a, more of a comprehensive look. Um, in, in many ways, I think I was trying to accomplish too much within, um, this amendment. You know, you know, opportunity, opportunity to amend. And would like now to, uh, propose something that's much more narrowly tailored to the, the need at hand. Aided, aided in this, um, presentation this evening is, um, Dan Ondem, Assistant City Administrator. Who is also kind of the key person for the Headwaters 123 Economic Development Initiative. Working with the EDA and other, um, staff and consultants on preparing this property. For future economic development. Um, and so I just wanna do a quick introduction, um, and then allow Dan to speak a little bit more in, in. About this Economic Development Initiative, provide a history and just some more background, so planning commissioners. Understand, um, its importance to the city as well as, um, you know, be able to ask any questions of Dan. Because he is the local expert on that. And then I'd like to, um. Go a little more in detail with what the comp plan amendment would consist of. Um, you know, to be brought back at a future date, uh, for more, um, discussion. Um, for the planning commission. And, um, the. Um, but also, you know, but wanna hear from planning commissioners this evening. If this is something that, uh, they could, um, they could support in this somewhat embryonic form, um, I, I did. Provide the, the basic, uh, you know, shift, shifts in housing and acreage between different future land use categories to Met Council staff. I've not received any feedback on that yet. Tomorrow I have a, a call scheduled to discuss this, so. Um, again, this is, is somewhat preliminary, um, but wanted to get this before, um, planning commissioners, just so that. It's something that, uh, you can understand, have, you know, takes, you can take questions on and then, um. So then we go to more formal, um, public hearing and. And that we, you know, we, um, you know, it can be more about what, uh, you know, what the, um, you know. More of the public input can be taken and, um, there's, uh, just more understanding among the, the planning commissioners. Uh, again, if I could provide the review, the property is 123 acres here, and this is, you know, just south of Headwaters Parkway. Um, east of Fenway Avenue and then west of Highway 61. Um, surrounding it is, is, you know, farm land that is in agricultural use, um, of course, we have the. Um, recreational amenity of Tanners Brook Golf Course to the south and single-family homes and some land in tillage. To the east and the Parkway and single-family homes, community center, YCA, that sort of thing on the north, um, some, some high-density residential. The, uh. The. The Future Land Use Plan does show, um. You know, does show this as. This area as. A mixture of this mixed use. Um, shown here, the striped red and tan. And a portion of it, approximately 33 acres on the south side, as that meet low-medium density residential. And so what the, uh, the comp plan proposes is to convert. The city-owned 123, 123 acres of this, these two future land use categories. To business park, which is shown here in this gray, which is, um. Across on the east side of 61 there. And so that's in a nutshell, um, what the future land use plan would look like, um, to have that as gray. Um, now I'd like to. Turn it over to Dan, if you could, uh, provide a little some background on this, um, Headwaters 123 Tech Quarter Initiative.
Can everybody hear me? So I'm gonna make sure my, my mic is working. All right, so. Uh, thanks, Donovan, for the introduction. I'm here just to kind of give a little bit of the, of the history, some of the work that's been done to date on the site. And kind of wanna kind of show some of the thought, the methodical and thoughtful approach that we've taken to the development of the site. A lot of this started back in 2014. We actually brought this parcel to the EDA at the time and said. We wanna actively market this for residential development at the time. Um, the EDA came back and gave direction that they did not wanna go residential development. Uh, main reason was they did, they did not want to, um, compete with the private market. They figured that. Let the private mark, private land, um, develop and then hold this land.
Commissioner Young.
Okay, so, um, anyway, the direction we got was not, you know, actively marketed as, as residential at the time. Um, it then was submitted as part of a request for information, um, that came from a, a company that was looking to cite a technology-based business in the metro. Um, through that process, the site did rank very high, um, it made it through sort of the initial phases and actually got to the point where site and onsite visit was actually done. I believe that was in early 2017, um, was when that, um, process was undertaken. Uh, uh, go forward to about 2018, um, there was, the technology corridor, um, kind of started about that time. The technology corridor is a private-public partnership. There's a lot of, um, local county governments, Washington County, Noka County. Lionel Lakes, City of Columbus, City of Forest Lake, um, Ugo's involved. Um, they, we are working together to try to cite a technology-based business or a data center in the North Metro. And when I say data, we've, I think the original focus was more on data center, but as you sort of gone through and talked to consultants and gone through scoping exercises and. Kind of looked at what the use is. We're not limiting strictly to data centers. It's basically, um, high-tech manufacturing, um, telemedicine firms, there's been a lot of movement towards. Real hospitals will send radiology reads out to, um. Off-site radiologists to have those reads done. Those type of businesses require a lot of data pipeline, so you start to see. Pretty unique criteria, pretty strict criteria for where those sites or where those, um, developments can take place. Um, so when the technology corridor was kind of starting out, one of the first exercises we went through was. Looked at the entire city of Forest Lake and tried looking at where within the city would be a good spot to cite a potential, uh, technology. Uh, job center within the city. And kind of going through all the different sites that are within the area, this site did jump to the top of the pile quickly. Reason being is that given where this is located, it does meet those, um. That narrow-banded criteria, it does meet the initial sorting criteria that's used. Uh, one of the main things that data centers and tech firms look for is redundant power. This site is served currently by Conexus Energy, however, just a stone's throw away from that is Excel's territory. Um, both Conexus and Excel have said that they would be able to serve this, um, site, so. The redundant power is met there. Um, also another initial sorting, um, determination is the availability of high-capacity fiber. Uh, one unique feature about this site is that it is right adjacent to high-capacity fiber. Um, a main fiber line does run adjacent to 61. This property just being a stone's throw from 61, but high-capacity fiber is right in the backyard of this particular site, so. Again, those two initial criteria were met. And kind of given the history of the site ranking high in request for information, that's kind of often technology, we started looking at this, saying. Let's do a little bit further study on this to see if this actually will cite in, you know, so continue to meet criteria. For development and technology. So what we did within, within the partnership, within the tech corridor, we started doing, um, some study analysis on the parcel. Um, one of the first things that you will see. One of the first things that you will see when RFI comes out for these parcels is has a wetland delineation or phase one environmental study been done? So we did go out, we did partner with the Washington County C D A, did perform a wetland delineation and a phase one environmental study. Again, looking for anything that's going to basically stop a tech company from coming in and developing this. If anything in those studies that would prevent that. Both were done last year. They both came back. There was no glaring, you know, obstacle in those studies at this point. For technology corridor or a technology business to say it there. So. We kind of continued on with the analysis of, of the site. One thing that we did do. Conexus Energy paid for a lidar equipped drone to fly the property. So we did do some contour mapping of the site. We do have a 3D model that we can kick out to. Firms who are starting to do like site layouts. They have a, we have a lidar flown 3D model that is available to them. So using our partnerships with the tech firm, we have done some actual, you know, study work. A lot of this information is on the investment for us like website where we're posting a lot of this forward facing information for this particular parcel. But beyond sort of the, the paid, paid studies that we've been doing for this parcel, we've been involved, or I've been involved in a lot of. Going through the criteria that site selectors use for citing. Technology based businesses. We partnered with Great River Energy. They came out and spent an afternoon out here and what Great River, Great River Energy has is they have a. Criteria or it's almost like a shovel ready certification. That criteria set that they had developed with Dwight and they, we actually put this site through that. So we put it through, basically ran it Stuart paces, looked at what the score was. I don't have the exact score in front of me right now, but it did rank high. And again, there was no major obstacles to pursuing technology development on this parcel based on that analysis. So kind of given the studies, given the scoring that we put it through, kind of brought up to the end of last year. Where we met with C B R E, National Real Estate Firm and met with their data center specialist and asked them, is it, you know, do we see this site developing technology? Do you see any red flags in this? And after meeting with him at length, he again said, no, this thing checks the box that need to be checked for a site selective to consider the site. So we did at the end of 2019 contract with C B R E. So we do have a listing of it with C B R E right now. It's in their data center portfolio. The nice thing about that is that our agents has both local, regional and national contacts. So he's on the phone constantly with all major players in technology who are looking to cite tech corridor or tech based businesses. And he, and he feels too, after his analysis of it, that this site does. Score well in terms of what a site selector has. One thing agenda that you'll see is based on the criteria that technology needs to cite is that you'll see a lot of cluster development happen. Typically, when one site gets chosen, a lot of the surrounding areas get picked as well. Just given the fact that that band is, it's pretty tough to meet that criteria set. So. Kind of, that's just sort of like a, a, a top coat of what's been done over the past, you know, few years for this site, a good parcel for development as technology. Kind of want to show in that we're not just kind of going into this thinking that the feeling that it's going to develop towards technology. We're actually backing that up with studies. With the right approach to us. We're taking that methodical approach and making sure that this does fit those boxes that technology firms are looking for. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I think that was a great summary, Dan. I, I think between you and other staff, the county staff, the EDA. You've brought it to our attention. Counsel, if I'm not correct, has had this presented to them and supported it numerous times. And then I forget which state agency as well. So. Do you have any frame of idea of how much has been invested in the hole in time and finances to kind of, and, and don't get me wrong, this, this could be a phenomenal. Project in Forest Lake, but I'm just trying to, to gather how much investment has been placed into it at this point.
So the total investment between the study dollars, hard dollars is right around 13,000. That's been invested for the phase one and for the wetland delineation and the drone flyover. Of that, the bulk of that came from grant funding. So we were going to partner with Washington County for the wetland delineation. Conexus actually paid for the flyover mapping. So a lot of what from the city of Forest Lake was about to do our partnerships, even able to get a lot of the study work completed at minimal cost this day. I think our total in, on the wetland delineation is right around $2,000 at this point. Staff time, I mean, I don't have a total number of hours I've spent in meetings or meetings with consultants, but it has been. Quite a few meetings through there. I don't have an idea exactly how much of my time has been devoted to that study.
Commissioner Keane, did you have your hand raised?
Dan, so you said we scored pretty well. What exactly does that mean? You know, I mean, we scored pretty well, but are we, are we there where we're shovel ready? Somebody, somebody wants to come in here. We're ready to go.
A great question, Commissioner Keane. In terms of scoring well. We're not at this point fully shovel ready. So what they look at is that, is there any glaring emissions, anything that's going to come in? Because we look at site selectors, they, they try to get you eliminated out of the pile first. You know, the first thing they'll look at is saying, oh, it's got, you know, it's too close to a railroad yard. So it's got a hazard condition that's there that's not going to let it cite. When we went through all of those things that basically things that you can't change about a parcel, there was nothing that showed that, you know, prevented this from developing in technology. Shovel ready certifications right now, when you look at data centers nationally, there is not a set set of standards that allow for somebody to certify a shovel ready. Deloitte does have their own criteria set. And they kind of like great, they helped Great River Energy develop theirs, but they're not, you know, you pay, you hire Deloitte, you pay for their brand that says this is a delight certified site. That's a pretty significant investment to get to that level of shovel ready. So we're pretty much as shovel ready as you're going to get without making that investment to have a consultant who put their, you know, their seal approval on it.
Wait, when you showed the map and you got, you've got the gray area and you want it right above the golf course. Everything to the east of that, what it was striped, is that also going to be gray from, from 61 over included all that?
I'll defer that to Donovan and I know.
Donovan, you're on mute.
I will share with you the, the future land use plan again.
Yeah, I was just curious. So you showed on the, on the east side of 61, that gray area, and then you moved to the west side of 61. But there's some land in between there that was, is the red white stripes.
Right, right. So. Moving back to the. The 2040 future land use plan and. Zeroing in there, that those, those are, it's only at this point, what I'm proposing is only the. The headbars 123 property. So there's a whole, and these are section of properties that are on the east side of. Uh, I mean, sorry, the west side of 61 that were mainly at that mixed use. You know, it might, it might be, you know, a developer might want to purchase these and include these and make this more cohesive piece. Almost kind of square this off if they want to, but at this point, we want to have, you know, the city owned property is shovel ready as we can get it. And, you know, it's, it's my, my belief that the zoning is one of the larger impediments to that.
Thank you.
Other commissioners. Not seeing anyone asking questions here, Donovan. What are you looking for? I know you're now looking for a motion tonight as this is discussion only, but what are you looking for from us?
Basically, to gather questions, I'm just kind of a general head nod. Cause I don't have all. You know, before, I want to have a conversation with Met Council staff on just that informal review. And, but I really, you know, just want to get, gain a greater understanding from, and just kind of a, I guess, the basic consensus of the plank commissions that. The, they understand this is a, this is a big, you know, priority of the city.
Commissioner Batty.
I'm, I'm, I was writing things down here, but I didn't write quite fast enough, but. I have, have any soil borings been done on the site yet?
There were some that I had to find where they were. They were done years and years ago. I believe some test wells were drilled out there. But there hasn't been any soil borings on recently.
Well, it's not going to, you know, if it's not, if the land's not developed, they aren't going to change, but I, I'm just. I'm assuming, I guess. Well, I'd be, I guess it would be interesting to know, where I would think if anyone developing the site would want to know that the soil characteristics are really similar to the ones. That are around there. Or for projects that are around there. And what I know of it, it is, you know, it's not bad soil. It's just, there is some clay out there, but. Other than that, I think it's probably fine. I think that's a very drainable site. You know, I mean, from my standpoint, I, you know, I, I'm, I'm very interested in. You know, keeping energy behind things like this, you know, and moving them at least to some point where we can, you know, see that if there's. You know, if there's a viable, you know, I mean, if, if we can get somebody to, you know, to bite on it. I know that there was that, or when this particular piece of property has been talked about it in times past, you know, the, the fact that it was originally designated for, you know, at least a portion of it for housing. You know, and obviously that would be removed from this. I, that's not a particular concern of mine because I think there's plenty of developable land, you know, on the south side of the, of the city there that, that could be developed as, as housing. I'm. Mike was, I thought was asking about that the square of land that's just east, you know, that's east of it, the property there between it and highway 61. That, that's all. Zone the same, this mixed use. Realize this is a public meeting, but I'm just curious to know if there's any. You know, if there's any potential for that property being included, you know, as part of, you know, all are part of that as being included in this. And I guess that's because it's owned by, you know, obviously it's owned by private, you know, it's private, privately owned land. But I would think that that would obviously increase the attractiveness of this property if there was a larger width of it that extended out to, to highway 61 there. Do you know, Donovan, is that wide enough? Is that little tongue of land that does extend to the east there? I mean, is it wide enough to to put a, a driver, a road or something, you know, a private road in there if that was desired?
No, actually they're wetlands that, that really impair that, that little tongue of land. I mean, it, it probably would be better off to be, you know, connected to it, you know, the, one of the adjoining parcels, because it's kind of separate. However, that property, there's, I think it's about a 15 acre parcel that's been for sale there. Development of that parcel is impacted by the fact that you have to run all those, any kind of sewer line directly west to the interceptor, which runs through the middle of this headwaters 123 parcel. And the city's not willing to, you know, encumber a, you know, a kind of sewer pipe through the middle of, you know, undeveloped land until we know exactly where, you know, the future development will be located.
Okay. Well, that's, that's good. That's good information to know. I just wonder if that, how important that would be because, you know, access to this property off of headwaters is to, you know, essentially a one way street. Unless you do that, unless you, unless your point of access is at a point where it's, where it crosses. And I guess the other than the, I guess that raises the other question is that. Would the city be open to? You know, that kind of thing. You know, crossing the median there so that there would be. You know, essentially two way traffic from a major point of access. Along headwaters parkway there to this property. I mean, there's one on the. On the west side of the. Of the, 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 the Y there.
Yeah, so.
Maybe that's enough.
Yeah, well, I'll see, see, there's the head what, there's the.
Okay, yeah, that's right. Yeah, that's right.
So there's your wetland complex, but then there's, then there's this crossover. That lean directly to the 123 land. So.
So that one there.
Yeah, so that I, I think access is, is pretty good. And this is on a road that could, you know, it's planned to accommodate 15,000 cars per day on average.
So you've got, and then you've got one in the middle there too.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Other comments from commissioners? You're looking for a head nod from, from me, Donovan. I'm, I'm pretty much on board that if we need to kind of move forward with whatever changes we need to do now with this property to make it more marketable. I see. Positive light in it being a data center or some sort of tech center myself. I also realize that that could be six months down the road, or it could be almost 10 years down the road. And I know it's a, I know it can be very much a long term play. That's very viable, but you know, the, the sooner we start making actions, the better. I think that, what is it? The four properties to the east, I think they're private homes. I would be open to making changes to that. That was in unison with this property. Assuming that those property owners. Were kind of on board with that. I, I think I'd almost lean in the direction of. Of hearing, hearing their opinion really strongly in that. And so I might suggest that you informally poll them and make a decision as to your staff recommendation when we're ultimately going to vote. In that direction.
Certainly I can investigate that one. And, you know, my, you know, what I would think was that the, you know, cities. You know, kind of development. Horizon is much longer than any kind of private parties so that we just may not be aligned to have someone who's willing to wait for that. That, you know, a big fish to swim upstream, so to speak. But um, that's, I like that as a suggestion.
Commissioner Young, I saw you raise your hand.
Eric, you mean the, the houses on the access road?
Yes.
Yes. The, the ones Donovan had pointed out, he had, he had suggested, or maybe it wasn't Donovan, somebody had suggested including that. In any, in any changes. And I'm, I'm open to it, Susan, if, if those. Property owners, I, I mean, make a compelling argument to my, I'm wrong. I, I'm not stuck on it.
I don't think that you need that to, to square that off at all. And. You know. Knowing a little bit about those houses, somehow I don't see them. Most of them interested in. Leaving soon. leaving soon.
Commissioner Keen.
Well, I think Eric, what you, what you were talking about is not, not making them move or anything, which is maybe dividing up their property more instead of them having, you know, twenty acres each, maybe they kind of back down to five acres and sell the rest off to some big conglomerate and, uh, if it's, if it's feasible.
I, I'm, I'm, I'm open. I think, I think the conversations, I think it's an easy conversation to have from staff to them, um, to see if they want to be included in that and, and consider that as part of their recommendation to us. I'm, I'm not stuck either way in it. Um, I'm very open to it. I'm, I'm okay with that zone today. Um, and, and set, and I'm okay if, if we make changes that it mirrored what the one-two-three property has. There are other comments from commissioners? Do you have everything you need from us, Donovan?
Yes, sir.
Dan?
No, thank you.
Okay. Um, we will move on to item number nine, zoning map amendment, application one, two, three. Hedwaters property, um, the public hearing for this is postponed. Um, was there something else you wanted to add to this too, Donovan?
No, I mean, really it was, um, the reason I left on the agenda is that I wanted to, um, clarify that, uh, for anyone who received a notification, because I did send out letters, um, to nearby property owners. Um, that, uh, you know, we would not be having an open here, you know, public hearing on this so that they wouldn't expect to have one, the one at this meeting. Um, and I don't really have any updates other than, you know, we've, we discussed it. Um, it's, uh, it's just, um, you know, I want to actually get things more in tandem as far as getting the Complan Amendment proposal together. Um, and bring the, uh, the Complan Amendment as well as the zoning map amendment together in tandem.
Were there any comments from commissioners that were holding on for this part? Uh, Susan, your hands raised?
Donovan, one of the things we talked about before was on the east side of sixty-one, rezoning, um, a significant number of those properties. That's not what you are intending this evening, correct?
Correct.
Are there comments on this? Otherwise we'll move to the added agenda item. Seeing any? Um, so we're moving on to item number ten that was not listed on the printed agenda item. I know everybody's been passionately waiting for the rooster nuisance memo from, from Donovan. Um, if you're wondering why this came kind of late, uh, City Council on Monday night had a conversation about it. And, um, in, in, and Councilmember Gerard could, uh, clarify this, but I, I think they got about halfway through and they were like, we should send this to Planning Commission. They kind of wanted our opinion on it. So Donovan, do you want to explain your memo or what you're looking for from us?
Sure. Um.
You have to do it without laughing.
All right, um, this is, I mean, I will say that, uh, um, commission, uh, Commissioner, Chair Langness's description is correct, that this was a request of the City Council on Monday evening to discuss, um, you know, the keeping of chickens, uh, rules and specifically, um, roosters. Um, there is a a property that's within the residential zoning district, rural residential, that, um, is basically, um, uh, in a, in a location that, you know, looking at the actual of the coop shown in your screen as that, you know, red rectangle, um, just considerable distances, um, to adjacent, um, residences. Um, this property, the owner's property is this seven acres. Um, some of these properties are smaller. Um, this is all, this is all rural residential zoned land. And it's, uh, you know, generated some concern among council on, you know, what can be done for the situation. The homeowner reports, you know, that she's kind of at something of wit's end around the noise. And looking at the applicable, um, zoning code rules, um, stating that livestock may be allowed in conservancy agriculture and rural residential districts um, on properties that are greater than five acres. You know, state stating, you know, explicitly that no lost livestock should be placed on any site less than five acres. Um, and of course chicken being classified as livestock. And then there's the exception that except chickens located on single-family properties and residential zoning districts. And then, um, there could, you know, there could be a stiff strategy of compliance, um, obtained. And this is something that the, you know, council passed in twenty thirteen and we've, we've processed, I believe, twenty-five of these in that time since then. And actually, it, there's been quite a run on chickens lately. Doing, uh, I find in two or three since the COVID restrictions have been enacted. Um, seems like people are home and they want new projects, so they're getting chickens. Um, and those, those conditions, um, also state, uh, explicitly that no person shall keep a rooster. So, I mean, these are for, you know, all properties, um, you know, of, you know, within the, you know, medium density, low density residential districts. And then for properties, you know, um, you, within agriculture, you know, there's, um, that are smaller than five acres, if there is a, um, single-family residence on that. Um, and I actually have taken some inquiries for those where there are some properties that are maybe like two, three acres in size where your backyard is only maybe two hundred feet wide. And these livestock requirements require the, um, setback of, of a one hundred feet of that, that chicken coop or animal farm animal structure, um, of a hundred feet as well as set, uh, further setbacks from, you know, the house as well as adjacent well or residence and, um, you know, seasonal or, um, year-round surface water. And I'll state that the, the, um, those, those conditions of the setbacks, you know, are met here on this property, um, which was the basis of the, of the complaint. Um, as well as another big piece would be that limiting the number based on two engraved little acres and this property, um, the chicken owner also complies with that. So according to the way the rules are written, um, the rooster, um, owner is meeting the, uh, the, um, the rules and the, uh, you know, what I've, you know, spoken with to the, to the property owner is that one, you know, one thing that, that could be in place would be the nuisance ordinance. And this is part of city code that says all necessary noises, which tend to disturb the peace and repose of neighboring property owners, um, is, is prohibited. Um, but that's really a subjective, uh, um, judgment, but in this case it would be by a responding police officer. And then to actually have some change, you know, actually have that, that violation be prosecuted in criminal court, having a judge, of course, agree, um, to that. So that's a really a far stretch. Um, and, but that's kind of where we're at as far as the code goes and this is pretty much what the, you know, the City Council, we looked at, you know, what if the code was changed today? You know, would that limit the roosters will know? Cause there's not, there's rules on non-conforming uses that allow that to continue, um, until more than a year of ceased use and then it can't be, um, reestablished. Um, and also I noted that approximately, um, sixteen percent of, of all the, uh, you know, city land is zoned rural residential. So any zoning text amendment that might impact, you know, roosters, um, you know, ignoring the, the not conforming use part, um, really would, you know, impact hundreds of properties. Um, so that is essentially what, uh, you know, City Council wanted, wanted, you know, to, the, the Plan Commission to consider. And what, um, uh, is based in, sorry, I'm losing my.
Stop while you're ahead.
Yeah, yeah. And I'm sorry, I'm, I'm trying to stop share, screen share so I can bring you all back and, um, turn over to, uh, Commissioners for discussion.
Donovan, I was just curious, out of all them homes, which home did that belong to?
Um, it belongs to the.
Just curious. I mean, it doesn't, doesn't really matter, but I was just curious as to which one.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I, I'm not trying to focus too much of the complaint because it's, you know, this could happen in other situations, but it's the house to the south here, that the one that's two hundred and sixty-five feet, uh, uh, you know, approximate distance from the coop.
And this is the. He's, he wants to know who's the, where does the owner's home?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Right.
The owner, owner's here, a hundred, a hundred and fifty feet approximately from the coop. And that's, that's just a shed right there.
Oh, okay.
So if he wanted to be nice, he could move the coop somewhere else on his property, uh, further away from all the. It's just, I mean, I know the roosters are still going to make noise and the, that's what they do.
Yeah, I, I mean, that, you know, if, if we could get agreement, um, you know, that I don't know if that would even, that would make a difference. I mean, that's getting the specifics of it. Um, and maybe, you know, maybe we could, maybe there's a solution here that, um, you know, Plan Commission could come up with, but it's, it's, um, you know, kind of we look in the larger sense of things, um, with that, the coop being here, it's kind of right above the, the address number in the woods, the edge of the woods. Um, you know, it's essentially, that is essentially the middle of the property and, you know, moving it elsewhere would, you know, pretty closer to another home to the northeast.
Commissioner Young is raising her hand. I was trying to call in her earlier, but didn't realize my mic was.
Okay, um, a few years ago, I got ambushed at my mailbox by my neighbor who said, you're on the City Council, Susan. What are you going to do about those coyotes and turkeys? I said, pardon me, Bob? He said, well, you know, I have to get up at four o'clock in the morning and those coyotes go off at midnight or two AM and they're waking me up in the middle of the night. And my wife has to leave the house at six o'clock and, and she finally gets back to sleep after the coyotes and the turkeys are waking her up at five thirty. And I said, Bob, you live in a rural area. You moved to a rural area. I had just spent six hours dealing with a council member in a city, uh, who was upset because she was hearing snowplows at seven o'clock in the morning, um, clearing the, the parking lots. If you live in the city, you hear city sounds. If you live in the country, you hear country sounds. I admit that I'm really not thrilled with my neighbor shooting off his AR at nine o'clock on a Sunday morning when I'm thinking about an extra hour of sleep. But I live in the country and there are country sounds. And if you live in a rural state or a, 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 a rurally zoned area that is not a city lot, and we have city lots here in Forest Lake, you can expect to hear rural noises, whether they be coyotes or turkeys or roosters or the occasional cow or a silly bean wean that's bawling for her mama. Um, those are country sounds and I am not inclined to try and regulate country sounds in country zoning districts.
Are there other comments from Commissioners? Otherwise I can as well. Uh, Commissioner Batty?
I, you know, I, I've missed, you know, we've had some fun with this and, but I, I know it's serious business and so we'll treat it seriously. But I, I'm, you know, what do you do? I mean, do you? So the, the, the no roosters thing is on properties that are less than five acres, right? If you have more than five acres, you can have roosters. Is that the way that works, Donovan?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Uh, I, I'm not, I'm not willing to give that up, you know, I just, I, I don't, I'm a, I'll admit to being a farmer boy. I grew up on a farm. I grew up with roosters. Um, and, you know, I know that, they, you know, they start growing in the summertime really early in the morning, you know, and, uh, but I, I, I'm not really willing to, to change that because I, I don't, I, I don't think that's an unreasonable thing, but I, I know enough about roosters and roosters crowing that you know, that they're going to, you know, two hundred and fifty feet is not, you know, they can be heard. Certainly depending on which way the wind is blowing, you know, for more than two hundred and fifty feet. So I, 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 you know, I'm not willing to change that. I, I just am not.
I, um, I watched the council meeting and one, one thing I, and your report was, was pretty comprehensive, Donovan, but one, one piece I think that you didn't mention was, um, that I think is important to the conversation when we're specifically looking at that property. Um, our attorney, uh, weighed in and basically said, if we changed our rules, it doesn't change that property's use unless they stop doing it for a year. Um, and so we could say no chickens in agricultural zoning and that property would continue to seemingly annoy its neighbor. Um, and could do so indefinitely as long as they didn't stop doing so for a year. Um, did I summarize that right, Donovan?
That's correct.
Um, secondly, I'm not a big fan of change in policy for one issue. Um, quite frankly, I remember the, the, the great chicken debate like ten years ago when that policy came about. Um, and it was quite the conversation. There was a lot of people involved on, on both sides, anti and pro chicken. Um, and quite frankly, I was in the middle, just didn't care eating popcorn on the side. And.
There must have been a whole lot of squawking going on there.
I, there, there was a lot of noise over it. And, and I thought, you know, I, I grew up in the city, so I, I don't understand raising chickens in your backyard, but I suppose I could do it here. Um, I, I just don't have interest in it, but I, I did attend, um, a, 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 Hools did this, um, chicken class and somebody in my house wants chickens. I can tell you it's not happening. But we, we went to this little Hools class at the, um, the Legion and I didn't hear a lot of complaints from what was clearly a whole bunch of chicken owners, um, about local policies here in Forest Lake prohibiting them to levels where they felt their freedoms were destroyed or something along those lines. Um, and I haven't heard a lot of complaints on the other side either, which honestly tells me the policy we have today is probably a good policy. Um, and so I, I hesitate to change much of anything. I, I mean, if, if we were going to change anything, I might say, let's look at the, the distances, but I would want some researcher evidence that says, here's how far a rooster crow noise travels and. is, is it actually an annoyance at that point? But Commissioner Young, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I do. So no, no chickens and, and, um, no laundry lines, huh? Sorry.
That's correct.
If, if, if we're going to do the rooster thing, then, then we're going to get into a, a, a real mel of a house. Because then we have to talk about peacocks. I don't know if any of the other commissioners live anywhere near a peacock. The first time I heard it, I thought that somebody was tearing a cat limb from limb and this person lives almost a half mile from me. I'm, I'm going to go back to it. There are urban noises that one expects and there are rural noises that one expects. And we really don't have control over what many folks could consider happy or objectionable rural noises. And, um, whether it's a coyote or a peacock or a rooster in a rural zoning district, I don't see a need to change.
Okay, other commissioners? I'm going to call on you, uh, council member Gerard. Do you think we've given the council everything you're looking for on this topic?
Uh, you know, I, I do. Donovan did a good job presenting it at the council. It was clear that even if we were to change something, nothing would have happened in this case. It really came down to people and their quality of life. And I have one person who's probably very happy with the roosters and I have someone who's very unhappy and, and the unhappy party did come to city council a couple of months ago, um, with some audio and, and there was quite a bit of squawking by the rooster. And so they had brought it back up and we felt it was time to discuss it. And I think the bigger picture was that we all understood that nothing would probably happen here, but we wanted to, one, make sure that we understood that correctly. And from what I gather from everyone on the commission here, yes, we did. And then generally, do, do we think we have it right? Am I correct on that, Donovan? Those are kind of the two points I took from it.
Yeah, I, I may think that, you know, that, I think the council looks at, uh, the, the city council looks at the plan commissioners as kind of the, what I always call like the wise sages of the zoning code and, you know, maybe some discussion could produce something, you know, some, some, not maybe a proposed change, but you know, if there are standards that could, you know, you know, could be tweaked, that could provide some relief to this homeowner. Independently, I, I did review some of our, our local, you know, nearby or pure city zoning codes. And I did find that that, that, that five acre size seems to be pretty, it seems to be, uh, it's a common number for that kind of cutoff for keeping of livestock. There was one, there was one, uh, I think it was Hastings has a provision where, um, you know, roosters on the run can be impounded and a process where, you know, you have to pay, you know, to, to recover your, your rooster. So that, that is, you know, that is a potential, but then of course, that means more enforcement and, and, uh, um, obviously the city does contract with the animal control officer and, you know, that's, that's possible, but that, uh, and that, you know, that was one of the complaints of the neighbor was that the chickens were coming across the property line. But I, that doesn't really address the, the central issue, which is the noise.
And, and that, and to Donovan's point, um, current council really looks to the planning commission because you have the in-depth knowledge of how these different zones work. Many on, you know, I'm, I'm one that was on the commission, so I, I, I have some pretty good experience. But the other ones, uh, three of them at least have very little, and so they really do rely on the commission to come up with, are we doing it correctly? And that's one of the reasons, um, they wanted to kick this back to you guys to see if you had a different idea, a different plan, something we should do. And it seems clear from everything I've heard tonight is that everyone is good with the current plan as is.
I think, I think that's correct, um, council member Gerard, the, I honestly think the balance is really good. If, if you want to live around chickens, there's a lot of, it's about half the city you can live around chickens. And if you don't want to live around chickens, the other half the city fits, fits that too. So we've got the, the best of bold chicken worlds here. I prefer mine on a plate. Are we done with this one, Donovan? Can we move on to other business?
I believe so. Thank you.
All right. Do you have anything? Do you want to start?
Just announced that we, we are holding a, a plan commission meeting on, uh, the Wednesday, 27th. Again, it'll be another virtual meeting. And so look forward to that and there are, you know, we're, we're still looking at some, um, other applications coming in, some that we've been working for a while, so, I, I think that even though we, you know, we live in something of a restricted social environment, um, or even commercial environment, there are still things, there's still applications coming forward. And that's, um, that's really up, that's it for me for my update. I'd have, happy to answer any questions of, um, city council. I'm sorry, plan commission?
Are there questions for Donovan? Commissioner Miller?
The only question I have, and I, I get it asked of me quite a bit is, do we have any plans for, uh, road improvements? Repairs, potholes? Mr. Gerard?
I'll, I'll take this part out of them. Um, there is, uh, you know, we passed a bounty bill for about $4 million to add to our roads. A map is out of what roads will be redone and I will, I can't remember what council meeting that was. Two of them ago? I could do a little research for you there, Kevin.
Commissioner Miller, if you email, um, Ryan, he'll actually send you the whole list of the schedule going years out of all the plans. He's provided to me, if it wasn't buried in my email and I could say I could get it to you real quick, I'd forward it to you right now, but.
No problem. I'll find it and I'll pass it on.
And that is the road, um, pretty much the road reconstruction. And then they are getting ready to open the bids for, uh, or award the bid for this year's seal coating. I believe that comes at the next council meeting, which will be, I think it's a Tuesday after.
The 26th.
26th, I believe that. So there's two projects here. One's road, one is just seal coating.
Uh, council member Gerard, do you have any updates for us? I, um, will first say I apologize for not having you on our last Zoom call. I realized it at the end of our meeting when I went to call on you and it was like, no one sent this to our council liaison, so.
Well, if I would have watched the calendar a little bit closer, I would have been able to get on it too and say, hey, I should get right to this, but no harm, no foul. I watched it. It was exciting video to watch. Now, I have no real update. The council, it's been pretty quiet with this whole lockdown and the Zoom meetings. A lot of stuff is not happening and that's really shrinks up what we cover at the council.
Questions for our council liaison? All right, we'll go around the room. Susan, did you want to start?
Mr. Coon has a something.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Keen?
Hey Paul, has anything been brought up? I know we're not, we're not the enforcers of the, uh, of the, uh, planning commission, but is there anything happening with the Winnick property there since they were not going to, you know, with their CUP, two years ago, we went through everything. They were going to put in new trees and that, then they wanted to wait till winter time was over and he gave us his word. He was going to do something with that. And I mean, I get people asking me probably every couple of months, you know, like what's going on there? Why didn't they put up a fence or whatever? And I don't know, I don't know the answer.
I, I have no news to give you on that. I, I, I'm hoping Donovan may have a little bit more.
I don't have any update on that.
All right, we'll move on. Commissioner Young, did you want to start off on the going around?
I would just have a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
I had to second that.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Miller, second motion to adjourn is non-debatable, um, but Justin Brink's daughters look cute. Karen, can we take a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Commissioner Keen?
No.
Commissioner Brink?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye, and Commissioner King can stay on all night.
Commissioner Batty?
Aye.
Sheriff Lagnis?
Aye. Motion carries. We are adjourned.